Item number seven, rezoning residential plan unit development amendment, Gateway Village, DEV 2014-014, quasi judicial hearing.
Thank you. Can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you very much. Dennis Mozak, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. The next request is by Mark Daust and Mark Daust and Associates on behalf of Dwight Selby, managing member of Gateway Development of Daytona Beach LLC, to amend the existing residential planned unit development agreement for property located at 3425 West International Speedway Boulevard, extending the expiration date of the PD agreement by an additional five years. We have a location map over here for you. You will notice that it is between West ISB and I-4, just east of the I-4 ramp. I've got an aerial for you, and you can see the burrow pit, the lake that is existing out there. It is an undeveloped piece of property. I took the plan that is being proposed and I superimposed it on top of it, and you can get an idea of how the plan would fit into the proposed development. This is a, just kind of a close-up of the proposed building, the proposed development with the residential buildings around the lake. As for Gateway Village and the history, development was for, or is for, 312-unit multifamily apartments. It was approved in February of 2007. The PD was extended in 2009 for an additional five years. The applicant is requesting an additional five year in this extension, and that will make the expiration date to be February 16, 2019. So as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the Second Amendment to extend the expiration date of the PD agreement by an additional five years. An affirmative vote by six shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and the item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on May 7th and for second reading on May 21st, 2014, and that will be a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
No, it's just an extension of the development time with the same project going in, just because economic reasons or whatever else.
Exactly.
That happened, so, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Daust. Our offices are at 536 North Halifax. I'm here representing the partnership. It's actually three partners. It's Dwight Selby, George Anderson, and Kent Sharplees. Kent Sharplees is in the audience tonight. And Jeff, you hit the nail on the head. The economy has been soft, the interest hasn't been there, although in recent, there has been more interest. So we're hoping this will be the last time we'll be for you for an extension. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
You feel confident you'll have it built this time for 12 years?
Well, when we first had it approved, we didn't think we'd be coming and asking for the first extension, so, but I will tell you, there has been a lot of increased interest, and that's not just in multifamily, it's in a lot of areas. So we're feeling a lot more positive that it's going to move forward.
Good, thank you. Would you fill out a green sheet before you go?
I certainly will. I'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rich?
By the way, are there any questions of the applicant while he's there?
Not the applicant. How many times can they get an extension?
There isn't a limit, so long as you're going through the public hearing process.
Okay.
Okay. Will there be anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Anybody like to speak against? Anybody like to speak? Can we have a motion, please? A motion?
I'll go ahead and then, if anybody wants to speak on it. I approve rezoning residential plan unit development, Gateway Village, DEV 2014-014.
You have motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move on to the next one, please, number eight.
Item number eight, continued items, rezoning planned development district, Screamer's Park, DEV 2013-100, quasi judicial hearing. And on this item, Mr. Tim Davis has a conflict, and we do have the form on file regarding that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we hear from applicant, please? I'm sorry, can we hear from staff, please?
Good evening. I'm Reed Berger, redevelopment director, and what you have before you is a request to place three amusement rides on less than a third of an acre in a size that is typical of a lot of lots in the RDB5 zoning district. This is on Atlantic Avenue that is just south of Main Street. It's between the Breakers Ocean Park and the 7-Eleven. I think we've got a map we could refer to as to the location that I just mentioned. The important thing I want to point out right off the bat is that this went on December 11th to the Main Street Redevelopment Board. They made a motion to approve the project. That motion failed by a vote of two to four. What that means is they're recommending to you and to the commission that you not approve this project. The planning board had this before them on January 23rd and on February 27th. In each instance, there was a continuation of this until tonight's meeting. That's where we're at. March 7th was the last time the applicant resubmitted to the technical review team, that is, staff, and the site plan changed in a few ways. Two very significant ways. One was the elimination of one of the three rides, and two was the addition of parking spaces placed on Ocean Avenue. The amusement ride itself and the company, you know, this company is a good company, very good company. It's known around the world, and we're very excited to have them in our community, and we are, we know that the plan that they provided, the site plan that goes with this rezoning request, I think they've done a remarkable job to put some of the quality into the design that they have. That said, staff continues to find that this proposed rezoning is not appropriate. Regardless of some of the things that you see in that site plan, it's not appropriate. And I'm going to give you just a few of those reasons. The rest are all in my report. Number one is that the use is not compatible with the RDB5 zoning district. Amusement rides are not allowed in the RDB5 zoning district. That's right off the bat. This does not fit with the intent of the zoning district, which is for commercial or retail uses. So that's important to understand. That's just right off the bat. Number two, it does not conform with a comprehensive plan. This is not what the plan and that future land use is intended to do here. And what is that? To provide a large-scale mixed-use project. That's not what we're seeing here, not on a one-third acre size lot. So again, this doesn't fit in. Last point I want to make is that this does not conform with the Land Development Code. The applicant is requesting waivers of the LDC. And there's a couple things in the Land Development Code that in particular were of concern. When the parking was put in, it didn't provide all of the spaces that were required. Before, we had none. Now we have some in that last site plan that was submitted in the report that you received last week. So that's one issue. And parking is really a problem down in the tourist area. It's a very congested area, and part of the other problem is, being congested, having more parking placed on Ocean Avenue and backing out into Ocean Avenue, not allowed by the LDC, prohibited. The waiver is being asked for you to say it's okay. Well, there's parking across the street that's in the public park and backs out. So is it okay for someone to back out of the other side in the private property because the city can do it? There is a difference. And that difference is that on the private property, we can't go back if we give it away and say, "That's okay." Where else do we do this in the city where we're giving, letting somebody go ahead and wave the parking backing out into our right-of-way? This is not good planning. So it's unfortunate that I'm sitting here and telling you that I'm going to recommend that you not approve this because I'm in the redevelopment business. I want to see these infill projects along here, but this is not the right place to do it for this use. In summary, this use is on a lot that is too small, and it's in the wrong zoning district. There are other options. There's the RDB8 area, the Ocean Center, the Daytona Lagoon area. That area accommodates and allows for amusement rides. The other place is obvious, where the Ferris wheel is, down by the boardwalk and on the pier. Those are two different areas where we say, "This is where we want amusement rides." And so with that, I'm just going to stop and tell you that, once again, the Main Street Redevelopment Board and the staff are both recommending to you that you not approve the project. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Will there be any question of staff, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm, 301 East Pine Street in Orlando, on behalf of the developer on this project. I have a couple folks here with me tonight. Richie Armstrong behind me and on my left is here with the Fun Time Group, who's the developer on the project, and Parker Minchenberg is also here with us tonight, our civil engineer on the project. We're excited to be here tonight. Took a little longer to get here than we had hoped. We had a couple continuances, and we'll talk about that a little bit. But we're excited to ask for your support, recommendation tonight, and we want to give you some reasons why we think this is a project that's worthy of your support and recommendation. I'd like to make, just to tell you how we'd like to approach this, I'd like to make just a few points, give you a little bit of additional background on the project if I could, then I'd like to highlight some items in the staff report for you, the updated staff report that we respectfully disagree with, and then I'd like to ask Parker to come up. He's got a PowerPoint presentation that I think you'll get a lot out of listening to. So on to the basic background points. Number one, and Mr. Berger alluded to this a little bit, and I appreciate that portion of what he said, Mr. Armstrong's company is internationally known company, the Fun Time Group, both manufactures and operates these amusement rides, which is kind of a distinguishing feature in the amusement industry. They have an excellent reputation. They've got projects and rides throughout Six Flags, all through the United States. Here in Florida, they've got the ride in Panama City Beach, an I Drive in Orlando, Old Town in Kissimmee, and then the current Slingshot Ride that's above the arcade here in Daytona, in addition to some other places, but just to give you a little bit of a flavor there. We have, Mr. Armstrong's company, I should say, has this property that we have before you tonight under contract for purchase because they very much want a permanent home in the city, and they want to continue to be a contributing member of the Daytona business community. The existing Slingshot Ride I mentioned a second ago, above the arcade, is leased. It's been leased, I believe it's been there since 2004. It's subject now to a month-to-month lease, and it's not an ideal situation to say the least. It's the reason why we're looking for a more permanent facility to make some improvements and really kind of raise the bar significantly for the project. Just to be clear about this, the existing Slingshot Ride above the arcade would be removed and replaced completely as part of this project. We would be introducing a brand-new Slingshot Ride that would be newly built, newly manufactured just for this location and made, and as I said, they manufacture and operate, so they'll manufacture it and ship the ride over here. And there'll be one additional ride to accompany that, and Parker can, when he gets into his presentation, he can give you a little bit more of a graphical feel for it. But we strongly believe, based upon their track record and experience, that this would create a world-class attraction for the city, a year-round attraction on the beachside, which we think there's a lot of benefits for the city in that regard. I would like to add that I think this is a lot that folks are familiar with. It's just such a well-known area in the city, and the lot's been vacant for a number of years. I mean, I think this would be, we're looking to really transform this whole appearance, and we think it'd be a significant upgrade in that regard. Before I turn to the staff report, I just want to echo a couple things, maybe clarify a couple things that Reed mentioned in his overview. Since the Main Street meeting, we did reduce the intensity of the site a little bit, took it from three rides down to two. I already mentioned that. We also removed a cafe feature that was going to have beer and wine sales in it. We took that out. Those two changes were made in response to some things that we heard at the hearing and heard along the way from staff. I'm going to let Parker get a little bit more into the parking issue than I'm going to address, but just in keeping with the other two changes since Main Street, we did add in nine parking spaces at one point in time. We did that in response to comments we've heard kind of repeatedly from staff that they wanted to see some onsite parking. Then when we added them, they didn't like where we added them for some, they didn't like it after all, so we took that out yet again. So it's been a little bit of a moving target. That's a couple of reasons why the continuance happened in front of this board on two different occasions. But all of that is to say is that we've been listening, we're continuing to listen, we're trying to be responsive to things that we hear because we really want to make this project work. We really want to, as I said, have a permanent home in the city, and we've been as accommodating as we can, and we think, as I said earlier, that this rezoning request and site plan are worthy of your support. So just briefly turning to the staff report, and when I say the staff report, I'm talking about the updated report. I believe it's labeled in your package, and just a couple points, because these are a little bit responsive to what Mr. Berger mentioned a couple minutes ago. On page one of this, of the updated report, under summary of findings, number one, essentially it says the proposed use doesn't fit with the RDB5 zoning district. Well, it's, we know that it's not consistent with the RDB5 zoning district. That's why we're asking to rezone the property. So, you know, we respectfully acknowledge that, but at the same time, that's the purpose behind rezoning the property, to accommodate the project. Number two, on page two, is a very similar point. This is a list of permitted uses in RDB5. Again, the same point here, we're asking to rezone the property to the PRD district that would allow for the use. Number three is something that I really wanted to focus your attention on if I could because I think it's important. It says, "The subject property is designated high-intensity mixed-use on the future land use map," I'm paraphrasing a little bit here, "of the city's comprehensive plan," and the comp plan describes, that's the high-intensity mixed-use category, as providing for a variety of flexible, for a variety, excuse me, and flexible arrangement of mixed uses on designated properties east of Atlantic Avenue. And if you look down on the third bullet point underneath that list, very clearly lists as something that's been contemplated specifically in your comprehensive plan, family entertainment center uses such as a water park, Ferris wheels, and active, exciting rides. Well, that's exactly what this is, and I think that's evident from the application. I think it'll be further evident when you see the PowerPoint that Parker's prepared, but I think that's important. I've heard some, you know, I've sat here with you all tonight and heard discussion about the comprehensive plan on different occasions, and I think it's important to acknowledge that the comprehensive plan specifically contemplates this use here. Mr. Berger, I have to correct him on something that he said during his comments. I think he specifically said that the comp plan requires that a project of this nature be large-scale. There's nothing in this comprehensive plan provision that's laid out for you in the staff report. This has to be of a certain size. Some of the other bullet points underneath, going further into section three, some of the criteria that I think is appropriate for you to consider because it's in the comprehensive plan, I don't want to just cherry pick it for you, but it says, "A significant redevelopment project in size under a quality of design, construction or rehabilitation of existing significant properties." Well, this is, as I said, we're preparing to purchase this property, it's a significant investment just from the standpoint of buying the land. Overall, it's a four- to five-million-dollar investment with these two rides and other improvements. I mean, this is a significant project. It's not a, it's not, it's, we're not cutting any corners. I think you'll see that in Parker's presentation. It's a first-class project. So I think it meets that criteria. It's certainly going to enhance, it's a private sector project, certainly going to enhance your tax base, and we're talking about a vacant lot that's been sitting out there for years, and we're talking about transforming it, as I said earlier, into a world-class attraction and a catalyst for additional development in the area. Mr. Berger mentioned a couple of different times, you know, we had a close vote at the Main Street hearing. It was a, you know, it was a four-to-two vote. It was a close vote, and we, as I said, we made a couple changes since that hearing, but it was a close vote, and this is, the next step in the rezoning process is to come to this board. I mean, that's why we're here tonight. The, I think, number four on page three of the report talks about the planned redevelopment district intended to accommodate urban infill. This certainly is an infill site, and high-intensity mixed-use projects. Again, I think we're hitting all those marks. When you see the PowerPoint presentation that Parker's going to share with you, this site is in such close proximity to those existing rides, including the existing Slingshot, that we think it's an appropriate and compatible use, given the fact that those other uses are in the immediate area. Number five, I have to confess, kind of threw me a little bit. Basically, what it says is we should have asked for the PAE District, Planned Amusement and Entertainment. We started this process a number of months ago. We met with staff, specifically asked for their guidance and direction on what category was appropriate for us to request, and they suggested PRD. So to say now, kind of months later, that we should have looked at this particular district, when, by the way, when you read further into it, you need a bigger piece of property, so there's no way we could have satisfied that requirement. I just, you know, honestly, I just don't think it's fair at this far down the line. And, you know, I just point out to the board, you know, in fact, if you, on the first page of this updated report, you know, it references, right underneath the summary of findings, it says, "This is essentially an update to Exhibit B, which was the planning board's original staff report." And if you turn to, I'm not suggesting that you do it, but if you were to turn to Exhibit B, which is a pretty lengthy report, because I did that earlier today, I didn't find any reference to the PAE District even then. So, you know, I just wanted to take the time to kind of make these points to you because we really do think this is a good project, as I said before, that's really worthy of your consideration and hopefully recommendation. So with that said, I'm trying to be sensitive of everyone's time. I'd like to ask Parker to come up and walk through the PowerPoint that we mentioned.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. I'm usually accustomed to coming before you guys with recommendations for approval, so this is a little different posture than I'm typically in with projects. This project, too, I'm very proud of, and the first slide, let me make sure I know how to work this thing. The first slide is the view from Atlantic Avenue. Basically, when you drive by, it's bounded on the north side by the Breakers Park parking lot, which I designed for the city a number of years ago when I did Breakers Park. That parking lot is, you know, a metered lot where you pay to go to Joe's Crab or go to the boardwalk. And a comment to make there, I've been by the site on a number of occasions to see what the parking's like there. Well, there's a lot of time during the year when that parking lot's underutilized. Last week, Bike Week, it was utilized 100%. But this project will give the ability for the city to make some additional revenue because they'll have a more year-round presence. And while I'm talking about that, one of the problems with Breakers Park and the learning center there is we have a lot of homeless people that shower in the bathroom and vagrants that stay there. We kind of feel like having this year-round presence 365 days a year is going to provide a better security for the park and keep an eye on things. So moving on to the second slide, this is looking west from Ocean Avenue. On the right-hand side is the pump station that services Joe's Crab Shack and some of the other businesses in the area. So we're bounded on the northeast corner of the project with the city's pump station. Adjacent to that pump station is a recently constructed screen dumpster enclosure that they truck out trash and garbage from Joe's and keep it there for pickup. So that's kind of what's on the north side of us. On the south side of us is the 7-Eleven that's been there for a while. You know, National Company, they're not going to be relocating any time soon. So what we're looking at here is a three-tenth of an acre site that the current zoning would allow an office or a t-shirt shop, but we feel the use I'm about to show you is an appropriate one. Looking at the site, we have the city-paid parking to the east. You can see the one car in the parking lot. This is actually an earlier shot before they built the dumpster enclosure for Joe's Crab Shack. You can see the lift station there in the island. And then the point Mr. Berger made earlier about the parking is, we went to the redevelopment board and the staff. Initially, we were requesting a parking waiver. The first thing there was, was how do you determine how many parking places you need for an amusement ride? Well, the guidance from the city staff is they compared us to a driving range at a golf course, and based on that analogy, they said we need 12 spots. So I had designed those 10 spots for the park that you see on the left of the drawing. So we came back in with nine spots that basically mirrored those spots on the opposite side of Ocean Avenue. Initially, the city engineer said, "Move them back five feet and we can support it." So that was one of our continuances. We redid the plan. We moved the spots five feet. Then the next set of comments said, "Well, you moved them, but really move them back because now we don't want the people on the sidewalk to walk in front of those cars, so move it back." So that was the second continuance. We moved it back to the way it was. Then I also had Lassner look at it, the transportation engineer. He basically, like I do, say this is a parking lot. When I designed it, it's a parking lot, and he didn't see any problem with backing out. However, the city came back and had risk management, and the city engineer then said, "Never mind what I said the first two times. Now we don't want you backing out." So presently, what we've got before you is a proposal requesting a variance to parking of 12 spots. Talking about that a little bit, you know, I also had the pleasure of designing a rollercoaster and the Ferris wheel and the go-kart track on the boardwalk. Because they're in boardwalk zoning, none of those have any parking requirements. The parking is all surface parking in the private lots. This kind of shows the previous landscape plan with the nine spots. While we're looking at that, what we endeavored to do was, you have a streetscape along A-1A, so we're matching the pavers in A-1A with the pavers along the frontage. And then along the rear, I matched the pavers with the pavers that we did for the park. So this really was designed to be an integral piece of the park, if you will. This shows the current plan with no parking. This is what we're here today asking for approval on. You can see on the left side is the Slingshot, and the right side is the Vomitron. I'm not going to write either one of them, but that's what they are. Along Atlantic Avenue, this is the view you're going to see once it's developed, and when I designed the Main Street approach for the city, we have an archway that says, "Welcome to Daytona Beach." Another consultant did the approach on ISB that also has an arch. So we captured both of those with an archway to try to tie this in to the beachfront, and we've got an ornamental fence and a small sign. Signage was an issue when we first submitted. We had some rooftop signs, what have you. So the reason for this slide is, we since have agreed with the staff on the signage. So this is just quickly some of the signage. And there were some problems, opposition to some of the signage, but currently, the signage is not a problem. We hired BFI, Brian Fredley, does a lot of projects with us here in Daytona, Hardy Plank, Stucko, Metal Stucco, Metal Roofs. For the beachside, very compatible. This rendering kind of shows you the site in proximity to the park and the 64 parking spaces that are the city-paid lot adjacent to it, and I hit on that earlier. We feel like, in fact, when this photo was taken, you can see there's no cars in that parking lot. We feel with this project that it's going to give the ability to have year-round use of that parking lot and year-round revenue. This slide, I think, is important because it shows on the left-hand side the existing slingshot, and on the right side, the proposed location for the new slingshot and new Vomitron ride. The reason that there's no parking required on the boardwalk is, you have that private parking lot you see right below the boardwalk. You also, you'll see in the next slide, you've got Peabody Auditorium and the Ocean Center. Another point I want to make is, there was discussion about this 3/10 of an acre and, you know, the intensity of the rides. If you look at the boardwalk and you see a Ferris wheel, a rollercoaster, a Tilt-A-Whirl, a go-kart track, they have all those things on not much more property. This was the parking exhibit, kind of hard to see from where I am at, but it basically shows you that there's over 600 spots within walking distance, including the Ocean Center parking lot. This is the previous plan that actually showed three rides, and this was what we presented to the redevelopment board. It had a Terror Drop, which is the kind of one in the back, and the Terror Drop had the most seats. So, it had, it had eight seats, which required an additional 16 parking places. So, to make a concession to help alleviate concerns about parking, we've eliminated the most intense ride. There was also discussion at the redevelopment board about concerns about alcohol, and so we've eliminated the cafe as a result of input we got at that board. This is the current plan, shows you the rendering from A1A, get a feel for the architecture of the buildings. Unfortunately, Bob, it's a lot of palm trees, but that's all that grows down there. I couldn't play oak trees then, or I would have. So, we've got palm trees lining both sides, crepe myrtles, viburnum, you know, nicely landscaped. In addition to that, all the surfaces are pavers. You know, it's kind of the most expensive surface you can have, not concrete, not asphalt, they're all ornamental pavers, so it's going to be a nice addition. And I'm winding down now. This is the, the current plan rendering that shows kind of the view on what would be there, and you can see Joe's Crab and the pier in the foreground. And with that, answer any questions I can.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? Was there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this issue? Yes, please.
My name's Richie Armstrong from 2830 Rockella Drive in Kissimmee. I've been a member of the Fun Time Group for 15 years now. We're an international manufacturer and operator of amusement rides and have been for the last 25 years. We've been located here in Daytona since 2004, I've been a proud member of the Daytona business community and been a part of the skyline and a landmark in Daytona since that period. Since 2004, when we invested heavily in putting our ride here, unfortunately, the land was reclaimed through eminent domain, which made our lease, unfortunately, a month-to-month lease, and we still live on a month-to-month lease. All we'd like to do is, we found a piece of property that we're happy to invest in, to buy in. We'd like to make Daytona a permanent home for ourselves so that we can be here for the next 20, 25, 30 years and remain to be a valuable part of the business community, part of the skyline, be a landmark for you, and create a world-class attraction. And we'd just like to ask your support to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak against?
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I walk past this property every morning, all four sides. I'll walk either down through the park, across the front, or up past 7-Eleven, across the back, so I see it every day. I've been walking past it for 30 years. There was a building there at one time and it burnt down. We've been waiting for something to go back in. He proposed, I think, Mr. Washington, do you remember, the fight over putting the building further back rather than up against the street. I oppose that one, and this is even worse. And I oppose it not because of the project itself, it's just the location. If you've ever walked down the boardwalk, which I do quite often, one of the best things of the boardwalk is this ride. You will see people stop constantly, and you'll get a group of five or six or 10, and they stare, and it's, "Oh, my God, I'd never do that." All right? But it's a way of something for them to do. They're not going to do it, but they stare at it. That's my problem here, it's right on A1A. We're going to have a problem if and ever, we do that little circle thing that Chisholm wants, which is ridiculous, if that ever goes in, we're dead. It's bumper to bumper. There are several times a year, probably four months, five months out of the year, when traffic is bumper to bumper, when there's an event at the Peabody, Ban Sheller, whatever, traffic backs up to Harvey and beyond. So, once you get these people standing there gawking, if they ever move back and forth, they're dead. Parking is not an issue for me on this issue. One, Ocean Avenue stops dead. They put a building on it, and so you can't drive it anymore. So, whether they have parking or not, whether they back in or not is not an issue. They don't really require parking. Dino has, what, seven buildings on the boardwalk, not a single parking space. You've got 17 buildings on Main Street, not a single parking space. So, parking is not an issue for this. The design is fantastic, I like the idea. When you come over the bridge, you used to be able to see, remember the tower that was there that Jim took out? That was a landmark, you knew that's where the boardwalk was. Now, this is a landmark, this is where the boardwalk is. But we all know that the highest and best use there is that hotel, if and when it ever comes. They're on a month-to-month, they need to go. Is there another location? Well, they had one on the pier when they took down the tower, but apparently, it's not going there. Is there any possible way that they can find a different location and extend the amusement area? Because it's hopscotch, I know Ree told you, well, they can put it over Daytona Lagoon in the middle of a neighborhood. It didn't work. They have bands there and whatnot, and trust me, at 3:00 in the morning, you don't want to have a band playing at the Daytona Lagoon. So, this is a great project, there's a great company, they've been really good tenants on the boardwalk, they've been great for our tourists, they're great for us, but I just don't like the location. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak against?
Good evening.
I wonder if you will fill out a form, too, when you leave?
Yes, I apologize. Good evening, board members. My name is Erin Thompson, I am here from the law firm of Landisgram &amp; French, and represent Hyvley Properties and Boardwalk at Daytona LLC. Hyvley Properties is currently a tenant at the existing Slingshot Ride site, and Boardwalk at Daytona LLC is an owner of several nearby properties. And I am here on their behalf opposing this rezoning and in support of all of the findings that the planning staff has made in the various reports that you have in front of you. I'll try to be brief, but currently, there is the current site, the current Slingshot Ride, and that is a space that is appropriately zoned for the use that you are being asked to change. It is currently zoned for amusement rides, there is already currently, obviously, the Slingshot Ride that is there. That site has already had significant investment made into it. It's a historic site, the entire area there is struggling, the boardwalk, the businesses. Yes, there are times of the year that we have an influx of crowds for special events, but there are, the vast majority of the year, that that is not necessarily the case, it's definitely more spotty. What I understood and what I heard was that the current existing ride is going to be removed and replaced. And essentially, what that's doing is creating the dark store effect. We are taking an already existing site, we're going to dismantle it, we're going to create something new in a place where it is not currently permitted, and we're going to leave a hole in the ground, or we're going to leave a blank, empty parcel that is going to be an eyesore. And that parcel is right in the mix of where we are currently taking great pains to bring people into. And now, we're just going to, if this is approved, create an empty space there. As pointed out, the logistics of the location of this site is directly on A1A, the safety concerns that are obvious for everyone, but also the aesthetics. There is a zone right now that has been approved for amusement rides, and the planning was to keep it all together in a nice, tidy area. If we change the comprehensive plan, as you're being asked to do, if this board grants the variances that are requested and changes the land development code, what we're doing is creating very spotty, almost circus-like, instead of creating a very comprehensive area that is actually already in existence, and there is no reason to change that. Parking, obviously, is an issue, it's been, I would say, one of the biggest issues for the planning staff, and for good reason. The parking that has, as it has been changed, actually doesn't permit any sort of pedestrian walking. So, you have people either coming from Ocean Avenue or getting out of their cars, and there is no walkway to get into, you're just walking through parking spaces. So, the parking spaces that have been created, one, this board is going to be asked to approve a variance for less parking than they're supposed to have, but also the safety of the parking that has been created is an issue. Again, it was brought up earlier, once you've granted this permission regarding the parking spaces, you can't take it back. I attended one of the neighborhood meetings that was held early on, primarily attended by other local businesses that are in the area, and many of the concerns that were voiced was, "We already have limited parking, the parking for my customers is limited, and now we have another business coming in that is going to, that is not being required to have the parking that they should." And so, that's going to be a stressor on all the surrounding businesses, and we can't rely on the public parking lot that is there currently, as that was intended for the beach and the boardwalk and the pier. Obviously, consistency, what this board is being asked to do is to make substantial changes to the comprehensive plan in the LDC, and I would ask this board, is a Vomitron something that this board wants to do that for? I heard earlier that this is a first-class project and a world-class attraction. I respectfully disagree. I think that there is a zone for which this, that's already been created for these purposes. To say that we're going to change our plan, make, encourage small development, instead of sticking with the large development plan for the purposes of a Vomitron, is in fact not the direction that the city of Daytona Beach wants to go. Earlier, there was talk about the investment, of course, we want the investment, we want businesses to come in and put their money. They are, as I understand, they're already a tenant, the ride is there, there are options either for other lots that are properly zoned, or perhaps negotiations with the current place that they are at. There is no significant increase in the tax base. What's being brought in is minimal improvements only. Only tangible personal property tax, we're not having any actual significant structures being built, so we believe that that is something for the board to consider as well. Do I have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Go ahead, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things, but I haven't answered any questions. I'd just like to respond to a couple of points that were made, I'll be very brief, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right. The first time I met Ms. Thompson was actually at the neighborhood meeting that she mentioned. In all candor, at that time, she didn't say who she was and tried to raise a bunch of concerns and things like that, and get other people at the meeting to kind of glom onto that. Didn't really work, most people that showed up at the meeting actually supported it. There's some neighboring businesses in the area that thought this would be a catalyst for additional development, additional foot traffic. There's a gentleman who owns a pizza shop across the street that was particularly excited about it, as I'm, I know this board knows better than I do, sometimes when you have folks that kind of quietly support something, they don't show up to the hearings, but I did want you to know that we had a neighborhood meeting, most of the folks there were in support of the project. Just in general, with respect to the balance of Ms. Thompson's comments, just to be frank with you, she kind of said it in passing, but she represents our landlord at the current Slingshot location, Mr. Hyvley. I received a letter from Mr. Ford in Ms. Thompson's office last year, increasing our rent. I think this, folks on this board may have known that we were trying to respond to an initial RFP for a location on the pier. That's ancient history at this point, but it didn't work out, but that became public, and so we received this particular letter. And, I mean, look, I'm sure it's not, I'm sure the Slingshot moving from that location and ceasing to pay rent to that landlord is not in her client's best interest, but we believe it is, the project meets your criteria, and it's overall, it's a good project that's in the city's best interest, so please, please put those comments in the appropriate context in light of that, if you could. The dark store comment about us, the existing Slingshot leaving, there's ample opportunity, that's a desirable location for other folks to go, there's no reason why another tenant couldn't go in that location. One of the last things I want to say, I think she mentioned on a couple of different occasions that we're trying to change the comprehensive plan, or not changing the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, as I went over in my initial comments, I think it's number three in your updated staff report, specifically allows these active amusement ride facilities. This is a rezoning to the PRD district. We're asking for one waiver on parking, which has been discussed a couple of times, I know that was a little confusing. We initially asked for the waiver, then staff said, "We really want you to provide parking," and we provided the parking, they didn't like it, so we took it out. So, now, we're back to asking for the waiver, but I think we have some good reasons for that. There's no, as Parker covered already, but there's no, the rides that are there now on the boardwalk don't have any onsite parking, folks can park in the same lots, get to the property in the same way that they do now, there's a lot of foot traffic and so forth, that's how people get to the site and so forth. So, I'll leave my comments at that, but I did just want to respond to those. And we're available for any questions, and I don't know if you had a question for us, but, okay, thank you.
No, I'm through.
Since she's representing the Boardwalk LLC, I'm a very minority owner in that, do I have a conflict?
It's, we have to focus on whether you stand to your minority business interest in...
And what the Boardwalk LLC...
So, you would have a financial interest on whether or not this project were approved or disapproved?
Well, if it was approved compared to the other companies, I guess, that would be lost revenue. I don't know if that would affect...
Well, I would recommend you abstain, we'll have to get a form filled out and entered into the record.
Just so that you know.
Correct.
Yeah, this puts us in a little bit of a dilemma, because we don't have enough people to vote now.
Mr. Sullivan, to, an affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval of a rezoning. You're down to five now. Do you want to go ahead, because we've got Mr. Davis is abstaining, and Mr. Hertz is going to have to abstain, so I guess it would be up to you. Do you want to get a vote tonight so that you can move on if you need to, or do you want a continuance for a whole board?
I appreciate you asking the question, and I have a clear answer for you on that, because we've had to get two continuances already, we really do need a vote from the board tonight. We've got a property owner, we've had their property under contract for some time, we need to kind of get through the process, so in light of that, that's what I would request, is that the vote happens tonight. But we want to get that on the record and make that clear.
Okay, so, we'll go ahead and create the record. They can move forward from here to the city commission, and I would just make sure the planning board members get your comments out, so that the record clearly reflects how everyone feels.
Okay. Let's see, do we need a motion now?
I have some questions. Can we open that up to questions? This is, thank for the staff. They mentioned there was issues, the voting, there was discussion at the Main Street Board. Can we hear what those issues were?
You're referring to the Main Street Board's...
Yeah, you mentioned that they had issues with it, and so, they voted 2-4.
Well, they, their issues were related to what was in the staff report to the Main Street Board.
Nothing outside of...
You know, that, those were the findings, and they were following staff's findings in the staff report.
Okay, I have another question for you then.
Yes, sir.
You, your preference would be to not have the nine parking spots over them backing out?
Preference is really based on the zoning. I mean, we can put parking aside, but, but, pardon me? Yeah, right. This is, this is, this is just looking at everything that's there, and right now, I would tell you that you don't have any parking, and that the whole point of trying to squeeze parking in there, and RDB 5, for example, requires you to have parking. It can't, it's too small. It can't do all of the things that it's meant to do. You can't get the parking in there, so you take the parking out. Where's the parking go? Well, as you heard from the applicant, there's a reliance upon, there's a lot of public parking around here, so we don't need to provide the parking like the other businesses do in that area, which is required in that zoning district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I had just a general comment. Some of my concerns are more major safety issues with those rides being so close to A1A, and I know sometime, we're riding down A1A, and you look up, you know, it catches your eyes, and then, traffic concerns, whereas folks running into the back of each other. And then, again, the other concern that I have is the location within the city and the appearance of it, along with some of the same concerns that the board may have, so that's where I'm at with it. I want to make sure that I state I do have concerns, especially with the safety issue, so...
Are there any other comments?
I'd like to add one more comment, not a question, but to me, it's good to see someone on the boardwalk investing. They see an opportunity to get a property and invest, and I take my family down the boardwalk often, quite a bit, and all over Daytona, and there hasn't been much investment there in a long, long time. Now, I'm not talking about Joe's Crab Shack, I'm talking about the entertainment area. I've been following the entertainment zone for a long time, so someone that's going on lease month by month, which I think most of them are on a different scenario, but someone that sees an opportunity to buy a property and put development on it, invest money in this area, that, to me, still falls in that area, I mean, the maps, you could argue that location either way. I mean, I get the argument of the location doesn't fit exactly what we're looking for, but it still falls in what I would call the boardwalk central area. I mean, the parking lot is for the boardwalk, which is, touches it. So, to me, it's great, when someone has an opportunity to buy in our area and invest in our area, and get out of a lease month by month type opportunity where you don't know what tomorrow brings, and I think they mentioned $5 million, you know, and to me, it sounds like a great opportunity. Now, exactly what it is and the names of everything, I mean, that's obviously, anybody could debate that, but I like to see the, our area looking for an opportunity to grow and do that, so it's nice to hear these things. That's my comments.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Well, in looking at all of the items that are brought before us with this, I'm in agreement with Mr. Benedict. I'm thinking here, the first thing that got me was the month-by-month payments, and I'm thinking, well, that's a great idea to want to branch out and do something. Then, I'm wondering, has it been, have you all tried to work out the difference? And I guess, I understand the movement, then, I'm, I question if it would really be a problem with the traffic, because as we know, traffic over there is pretty thick. Looking up, you look wherever the Slingshot is, individuals are looking up, so I'm really tossed on this one. I'm really tossed on this one.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. I'm really tossed.
Now, I just wanted to say, I don't think this is a question of the quality of the organization that's involved, nor of that man right there, Mr. Mitchburg. He does an excellent job, and he's done a lot of projects around this area that we've been very proud of. And I come down to, really, the problem appears to me simply to be size and wear, and those two really are very difficult for me. And I also have a little problem with the Main Street, Main Street making a recommendation on something that, because I think we're relying somewhat on them to do this kind of research for us, and so, I have a little problem with that. All right, are there any other?
Can I just talk? Or should I not talk?
It'd probably be best if you abstained from participation, because your form wasn't filled out from the beginning, so...
Yes, I know this is very difficult for you, but you do the best you can.
So, just be quiet. I was just going to say, and I've said it before, I think the last time they were in, it's kind of like they're trying to put a 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag, and that's very difficult to do. And what you've said is exactly right, as far as these people are concerned. That's not the problem at all. I just think it's something that can't go there quite too well. This is only the second time, I think, I've ever seen the staff not recommend, you know, something, which there's some way to, I have to listen to the Main Street.
Any more comment? I guess I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8, the planned redevelopment change for DEV 2013-100, Daytona Screamer's Park, for the rezoning.
All right, we have a motion, a second. I actually want a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Mr. Moore? Ms. Washington? No. Mr. Hoitzma?
No.
Mr. Neal is absent. Mr. Davis has a conflict. Mr. Barhu? Mr. Benedict? It fails. One, two, three, four. No's, one yes.
Thank you for being here. I'm sorry.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Can we just get to our other business downtown below, downtown Blue Road redevelopment area board report? You know, this is very challenging.
Downtown Blue Road redevelopment meeting was held March 4th, Tuesday, March 4th. The meeting was called to order at 12:05. We had roll call, the normal agenda, approval of the minutes for both February 4th regular meeting, as well as the special meeting that was held on February 18th. There were three items on the agenda for action. Conditional use Ivory Thai Kitchen 246, South Beach Street, permit for alcohol use inside and at the outdoor, for outdoor table service. RDD 1 was the zoning district. It was approved. A conditional use approval for Wine Me Wine Bar, 204 South Beach Street, serving wine only, RDD zoning district, that was approved. Conditional use for Heart of Italy, Italian Restaurant, 200 South Beach Street, beverage service in restaurant and outside at the walk-up cafes for service. RDD 1 zoning district, that was also approved. We had one comment from the public, actually, it was a question from Big John, and the meeting was adjourned at 12:45.
Okay, thank you very much. How about Midtown?
I attended Midtown redevelopment board meeting Tuesday, March 11th, 6 o'clock, and of course, we had reports, comstat reports on the police department, code enforcement, so forth. We had an action item DV 2014-2022 Dollar General, which was approved. We also had an update of community activity streets, which is now being presented by the Salvation Army, and that was an interesting thing. It's a great benefit to our city and to the Midtown area streets. It's, again, a work readiness team that actually, the Salvation Army comes out and actually work along, helping clean up our city and picking up papers and cutting loans and so on, other things, so perfect fit for their redevelopment area. The other thing, we have a Midtown workshop scheduled April 22nd, from 4 until 8, right here in the city. Meeting was adjourned.
Thank you very much. Main Street?
Main Street board meeting, probably 20 minutes of protracted sorrow, resignation, all sinners. I opened myself.
I wasn't on. One agenda item, which was the previous Boardwalk LLC item that was extended, and a bit of discussion about bars continuing to operate on Main Street that do not serve food or go next door into a kitchen and produce a hamburger that was cooked three days ago. Concerns like that, which Mr. Nicholson is our enforcer, he can list them in detail, so relatively short meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim. And by the way, thanks for doing that.
Did you report that everyone at the Main Street board gets watered?
Yeah. I mean, when I first joined this board, this may not be the appropriate time, but Ms. Remark did bring candies.
That's true.
Anyone can pick up that slack.
Actually, I think you can bring that up under board member comments, and we'll go from here. How about public, how about public comments?
Mr. Public is here.
And next week, I'll vanish for three more weeks. John Nicholson, 413 North Cranville Avenue, 1. Now, no enforcer. I've been trying for a year and a half to get Hector Garcia to go out to the Main Street Station to find out that they no longer have a kitchen. We passed an ordinance, remember, that with $10,000, Whole Nine Yards, well, they took out their kitchen. And then, we had two bars that opened up on Seabreeze without a kitchen, so it's kind of one of those things. They're going to look into it, and they've promised me, it's been 11 months, but they are going to eventually go and check it.
Who is "they"?
The city. Hector Garcia, city manager, yeah. It's been a while. There are three issues. Again, we're going through this thing that we went through 11 years ago. I don't know if you remember the property on Beach Street with the submerged land, and they had this tiny little piece of property, and they were going to put this huge building, and we were going to look into it. Well, we haven't done it. It's been 11 years, so I'm reminding you again, every couple of months, I come back. Please look into submerged land before that thing comes up again. Secondly, a floor area ratio, we were going to look at that. And lastly, on the parking in the multiple hotels, we now have Hard Rock going in with the restaurant and the Whole Nine Yards. It has come to my attention and to others, that we are requiring X amount of parking spaces for the hotel with the assumption that nobody in the hotel is going to eat in the restaurant, all right, or that nobody in the hotel is going to use a convention center. So, we require parking for the hotel, parking for the restaurant, parking for the convention center as all separate items, and I really think we should look at it as a concerted effort, because every time you add 100 parking spaces, it's another floor, which is another million, million and a half dollars to a project. So, I would ask you to look at all three of these before we go down that roller coaster path again, and it's coming soon, I hope. Thank you.
Well, it's just been 11 years. I don't know why you should rush us so much on this, to try to get these things done. But no, it has been a long time, and we do need to address that about the submerged. We've talked about that before, and we talk about it, you know, periodically. When you bring it up, it's a good point. How about staff comments?
First, I want to thank everybody for being here. We had a quorum, we had one vacancy, we had several people couldn't make it tonight, so appreciate everybody's attendance. It helps a lot. I know Mr. Moore wasn't feeling real well, so appreciate you. One thing we do periodically, I wanted to do again tonight, I know it's late, and it doesn't need to take long, but we asked for your contact information, just to make sure we've got how you want us to contact you, whether phone, cell phone, home phone, address, email, whatever. So, if you could just check, it should, you should have copy in your folder, and if it's fine...
Send the folder.
I think so.
We did, I didn't see.
You did not get one in your folder. All right. We will get it into your package next time when he comes to you, if he can look at it and when updated, if there's something that needs to be updated.
Yeah, we asked that to be updated about 10 years ago.
Well, it's constantly being updated, but I like to do it regularly. I've probably got some contacts before tonight's meeting, where you regularly get, the public asks for ways to get in hold of you, and this is the official information we give them. We don't want to give them more or less, so I want you to all be comfortable with what we're providing.
Whatever we provide to the city for our contact information...
It's the public.
...has to be given out to the public if they request it. So, if you want your email address given out, give it, if you just want your home phone number or something.
If you don't want your home number, whatever you give us is what will be given.
I just do not have my home phone, because I'm listed in the phone book.
The other thing I wanted to, at the last meeting, I pointed out, the TPO is working on a survey relative to the public's interest in different transportation things. That is in a final draft. They discussed it this week. They're going to have it before your next meeting, so as soon as I have that, I will disseminate. They're going to do it in a lot of web contacts, as well as hard copies. I'll have hard copies and the link for you to provide your input, because they're looking for as much public comments as they can get. And then, lastly, I had last time mentioned, thought we might be somewhere providing the land development code, we're still, there are a lot of details. All of the information that John has talked about is in there, and we're still working through the, trying to get it into a final draft. We've been meeting very regularly with V Card folks. We'll meet again in the morning with them, and have been doing that for some time, and hope to bring that soon. I can't say when, because there's a whole lot of issues in there, and the time we bring up a few, it seems to bubble into others, but we'll have that soon, and I did hope that last month where we were, but when we went through that, there were some details that aren't ready, so just want to give you an update on that.
Any more?
That's all.
Remember? I guess that takes care of our evening. Thank you for your patience. It's, I thought we had a lot of public feedback.
You didn't ask for board comments this evening.
I thought I just asked, did anybody have any comments?
No.
Yeah, go Florida.
Wait just a second now. What now? Do you have comments?
No. But I heard staff, I didn't hear board. I want to make sure that we touch on everything.
It's been a very difficult evening.
I understand. It's been a while since you've been that...
I don't understand that. All right, let me put it this way. Are there any board comments? I thought I said...
We've already made them.
Do you have any board comments? Anybody over there? Anybody over there? How about you? Do you have any board comments?
We're done.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Call order, please. And roll call, please. Mr. Hertz?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Dragan? Ms. Washington?
Here.
Mr. Hoitzma?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention ahead of time that anybody wants to request, actually, to request to speak to the board, but don't forget to fill out the grant, fill out the grant form, which is over there on that table. I guess we have the minutes, each of you's got a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, please, number four.
Number four, large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, Terragona Shops, DEV 2013-124.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from staff, please?
Good evening.
Could you move the microphone here, please, sir?
Mic on. Good evening, Elizabeth Matei, Senior Planner. This is a request by Rob Merrill of Cobb Coal, representing Paul Hollub of Speedway Investors for approval of a large-scale comprehensive plan map amendment. I'm looking for the remote for... This is for approval of a large-scale comprehensive plan map amendment, changing the future land use map designation from office transition to low-intensity commercial for 2.47 plus or minus acres of land located at 1145 International Speedway Boulevard, and amending issues and policies to Neighborhood M of the future land use element in the comprehensive plan. The applicant has provided information that there will not be new net trips, and this will result in a decrease in traffic impacts. And the applicant has stated that they will be using square footage from the gross acreage for the proposal, and requested staff remove the suggestion in the recommendation section to limit the proposal to 21,063 square feet. The applicant is also limiting the policy amendment to 50% of the gross floor area, rather than including a 10% discretionary increase in the allowed floor area for the proposed amendment to Neighborhood Policy M, so staff is no longer suggesting the recommendation to use a combined floor area amount of 60%. Regarding the proposed amendment to Neighborhood M issue and policy, staff offers no recommendation on the policy issue raised by the applicant's proposed text amendment. Regarding the map amendment, the proposed future land use map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, does not represent urban sprawl, will result in a minimal increased demand on water and sewer, and there will be a reduction in trip generation. Public facilities will be available to serve the increased demand. Based on staff analysis and review, the proposed future land use map amendment, from office transition to low-intensity commercial appears to meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan. A majority vote of the planning board members present and voting are required to recommend approval of this policy matter to the City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we do the second part of that meeting? I do it as two parts. Or just a comp plan? No, it's fine, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, Rob Merrill, for the record, with Cobb Coal, 149 South Ridgewood. I'm down to one crunch, crutch since I saw you last, and I've practiced standing up for long periods of time and talking, so I think that's probably the bad news tonight.
Yeah, we have to turn the clock on in a minute, will you?
Yeah, thank you. I'm here tonight representing Mr. Hollub, and I appreciate staff's input in their presentation tonight, and they've given you a very complete application package, which always makes my time at the podium shorter, and I know you appreciate that. So, I'm not going to dwell on a lot of the detail of what they gave you, including their recommendation of approval for the future land use map amendment, and all of their analysis is contained in this report, I'll simply point to and rely on for the purposes of the record before you tonight. I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about what we're here to do tonight, what we're requesting that you do, and what we're not requesting tonight. We're not here with a project being presented to you, rezoning, we will be back very soon with one. There are a couple of things in the technical review process that caused the planned commercial development rezoning to lag behind the future land use map amendment and the text amendment that's before you tonight, which I think is fine, because as you know, this results in a transmittal from the City Commission, which has to be reviewed by the Department of Economic Opportunity in Tallahassee and the Lucio Growth Management Commission, which takes some extra time, so this will allow this part of the process to begin if it gets approved by you and the City Commission. I think it probably is worth spending a few minutes elaborating a little bit, and maybe adding a little bit of additional material to what was presented in the staff report as it relates to the amendment that's being requested. So, what I did for you is, you should, did everybody get the handouts that Ms. LaCroix passed out before the meeting? The first handout is just a page out of the future land use element, and what it does is, it actually gives you in context, the two different land use classifications that are at issue here tonight. The first one being the office transitional, which is the existing future land use on the property, the second being the low-intensity commercial, which is the requested use. And I bring these to you so you see them in context, and also so you can read them and see exactly what each of them say. And then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we are proposing a text amendment to limit, further limit, the low-intensity commercial land use that we're requesting here tonight. I'm just going to read these out loud for the folks in the audience that don't have it, just so they can know exactly what it says as well, because you don't have this verbatim in the report. Under office transitional, it defines it as an area primarily for office, public schools, and multifamily uses. The floor area ratio shall not exceed 3, or the residential density shall not exceed 40 dwelling units per acre. The low-intensity commercial is defined as an area primarily of retail, personal service, office, and restaurants, the floor area ratio shall not exceed 1, or the residential density shall not exceed 12 dwelling units per acre. So, what you see there is, the primary difference between the two in terms of the uses are the addition of the restaurant and the retail uses, and I'll say more about that later. And that's really the biggest reason why we're here tonight. But one of the things I wanted to point out to you was, another difference between the two of these land use classifications is the amount of development that can be permitted. Under the first, the floor area ratio of 3, versus the second, which we're requesting of 1. And for, I don't know if everybody knows what floor area ratio means, and I don't mean to belittle anybody if they don't, but floor area ratio means essentially, the acreage of the property, the two and a half acres, can be built three times in terms of square footage of a building on this site. To do that, you'd probably have to go five, six, seven stories, but that's what's allowed by the comp plan. Again, all of these things we talk about in the comprehensive plan context are theoretical maximums, but they're boundaries that we established that I think are important to highlight. The second one is the 40 dwelling units per acre versus 10. So, in both cases, a dramatic reduction in the quantity of building that can be constructed on the site. Now, you might ask, why is Mr. Hollub, you know, a real estate investor, looking for a decrease in the quantity? Well, the key is that the second category allows retail and restaurant, which I'll talk about in a minute, which I think is, I hope you'll consider to be appropriate for this site. I'll also mention that when Elizabeth was talking about transportation impacts in her comments that she made tonight, I think she was intending to amend a few places in the report that you might have seen, had said there was going to be an increase in transportation impacts as a result of this amendment. Again, when we're looking at these comprehensive plans, we're talking about a theoretical maximum of what could be built on the property. In this case, it's sort of intuitively obvious that when you reduce something by three times its size, or in the case of the intensity of the residential, four times less, the amount goes down in terms of what could come in and out of it in terms of cars. So, and Target Durbis, our transportation engineers here, if you had any questions about that, but I think it's pretty straightforward. I think that that's, the result is, there are fewer trips on the road as a result of the change that's being requested tonight. The second piece of paper I gave you was a map, and it is a copy of a portion of your comprehensive plan that identifies different neighborhoods, and I know you all have experienced this before. Daytona Beach is divided up from a comprehensive planning standpoint into several neighborhoods, and they all have their own little policies that apply only to them, and it creates some areas that have unique aspects that are reflected in the comp plan, and ultimately in the land use decisions that you guys make about rezonings or site plans in those areas. The reason why I wanted you to see this and understand the geography of it, and this was also something that wasn't in the report, but I thought it was important, is if you look at the north side, the upper side of the page of the diagram, it's International Speedway Boulevard is the boundary of this neighborhood. The western boundary is Clyde Morris, eastern boundary is Nova, southern boundary is Bellevue. So, for the most part, this, what otherwise in the center has a historic, single-family residential neighborhood that I'll also talk about in just a second, is, has at its boundary some pretty significant arterial roadways, and I'll also talk a little more about the significance of International Speedway in just a minute. And I wanted you to understand by looking at this map, that the restriction that you'll find in the proposed text amendment, that's before you, as the second item tonight, to limit the retail and restaurant that's developed along International Speedway Boulevard in this neighborhood to no more than 50% of the gross square floor area, which Elizabeth mentioned. That's important to consider, because a big part of what I'm bringing to you tonight is not just a change from the office transition to the low-intensity commercial, but with that limitation and only with that limitation. So, those two things go hand in hand. With that, I want to spend just a few minutes talking to you a little bit about the history of this piece of property and Mr. Hollub's involvement in it, because I think that's important for you in your consideration tonight, and I think that some of you already know this, apologize to you if you do. I know some of you are new to the board, since this was before the board last time in 2012, so for you, for those of you that were here, I apologize. But the others, Mr. Hollub bought this property about three years ago. He's a real estate investor, if you don't know him, has developed a lot of commercial and office centers around Ormond Beach primarily and Port Orange, does a fantastic job, and I'll talk a little bit about Paul in a minute. But he came before the board in 2012 with a request very similar to this, but without the limitation on the square footage of the restaurant retail. As a result of, I think, a lot of the neighbors, some of whom are here tonight from the Highlands neighborhood, who said they didn't want that to happen, it was denied. As a fallback, in 2013, he rezoned the property from residential, which it was at the time zoning, to office professional, and immediately began, or even before, began trying to market it and lease it up for an office building, or a series of offices. Since that time, he's been going at it, as you might imagine, he's got a significant investment here in this property, and has not been successful. Now, I tell you that not because you guys are necessarily interested, or that it's entirely conclusive that you should make decisions based on the marketplace, but certainly the marketplace is part of planning, and that's what we're doing here tonight, we're talking about growth management and planning. So, I wanted to give you that piece of information to let you know where he's been since he was here last time. And so, the purpose for being back here is hopefully compromise, we're meeting in the middle, as I see it. Now, some people in the audience may not agree with me, they think that they'd either rather have maybe nothing here, or some offices, but I'm here to tell you that in order to build an office complex on this piece of property, he's going to have to lease a certain percentage of it to get financing, and those of you in business understand that. He hasn't been able to do that, and he doesn't see anywhere near the foreseeable future of being able to do that. So, that's why we're here tonight, I'm telling you plain and simple. It's a market-driven consideration, and I think it should influence a planning decision. I have several people here in the audience from the Highlands subdivision, I've had, I'm a third-generation resident of Eastern Volusia County, I've had plenty of friends live there, I think it's a great neighborhood, I think it's a historic neighborhood, probably the oldest maybe in the city, and I've got a lot of respect for the comments that they, the folks that live in that neighborhood have made about protecting their neighborhood from intrusion, commercial intrusion, multifamily intrusion, university intrusion, whatever it's been, they've been diligent for many generations, I think, at protecting their neighborhood, and they've done a great job of it, it's a nice neighborhood. I'm not here tonight to suggest that there should be any intrusion into their neighborhood. What I'm here to ask you to do instead is recognize the things that have changed on the periphery of their neighborhood, not the core of it. You know, we've had a lot of involvement from this neighborhood in the previous process, we've had meetings as recently as a few weeks ago with the neighborhood, we've had some meetings with individuals, so there's been a lot of communication, I want you to understand that, this is, we're not here tonight, and if you hear opposition, it's not because we haven't tried to talk about it. I can say to you that my perspective on it is, there's probably a difference of opinion among the neighbors, and it ranges anywhere from, I can say this safely, I think, because it's been said out loud many times, we don't want anything there, we'd like to keep it a park-like setting, like Tuscaloosa Park right down the street, all the way to, we think it's a great idea, we sure hope you get a Starbucks or something, a nail salon that we can walk to instead of having to get in our cars. So, those are the two extremes, if you will, I think, of the neighbors that live nearby, but in between that, you've got a lot of other opinions that I'm sure you'll hear tonight, including changes that they'd like to make to the plans Mr. Hollub presented to them in terms of tree preservation, or buffering, or building architecture, or a lot of different things that have to do with the site plan or the actual PCD rezoning. We're not here presenting that to you tonight. We're happy to ask, answer any questions that you think you want to talk about tonight, but I would submit to you that those are not questions that are before you, but again, we're happy to talk to you about them, and we've got everybody here to do that if you like. I'll also mention to you that I think there will be people who will come to you tonight and say, you know, we've worked long and hard on this comprehensive plan in Daytona Beach, why in the world would you change it? And, you know, I want you to think about the fact that comprehensive planning, by its nature, by its definition in the Florida statutes, when it originated in 1985, is a dynamic process. It's something that constantly changes. I mean, how many times do you guys see people like me in front of you saying, will you please change something in your comprehensive plan so we can do this, this, and this? It's what happens, it's, things change. In this case, I think it should be clear to anybody who lives in Daytona Beach or near Daytona Beach, that International Speedway Boulevard has become an economic engine for this city. I mean, we have a coalition of people who meet on a monthly basis to talk about that, and have been for three or four years now, including people from the city and county and DOT, and all the colleges, and a lot of the institutions that front or are near ISB. So, this is an area where we have 43,000, I think, cars go by, or at least trips go by every day. It's a heavily trafficked area, it isn't what it was when the comp plan was written. That's not to say that the provisions in your comprehensive plan that protect the Highlands and the residents from intrusion are any less valid, they aren't. In fact, the provisions that protect not only the Highlands neighborhood, but all the neighborhoods in Daytona Beach, that I think are very stringent and have been used and have been successfully used in many projects that I've brought before this board in 27 years, are absolutely relevant in this case, and they will be applicable to whatever's built on this piece of property. My contention, though, is, the edge of this neighborhood has changed, and to try to restrict the edge of it to something that's not compatible with the marketplace, I think is not reasonable, and I don't think it's good planning. So, sorry it takes so long talking to you about it, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I will mention to you that we have had meetings also with Mainland High School and the school district, there are ongoing conversations about our plans, which will be coming back to you, I hope, next month, so you know that we're talking about things like Votran bus stop enhancement, and pedestrian opportunities, and things like that. In your package there tonight, I've also given you several letters of support from certain folks, and there will be more to follow as the zoning comes through. I think particularly relevant are letters from each of the past mayors of the city of Ormond Beach, Dave Hood, Carl Persis, and Fred Costello, and I mention that because Paul Hollub's got an unbelievably good reputation as a developer in this community in Eastern Volusia County, and to have three mayors of the community where you've done most of your development write a letter to the Planning Board of Daytona, saying the kind of things they say in those letters about him, that goes a long way. I'm not here with somebody from Orlando that's never done anything in Daytona Beach that doesn't live here, so I think that's important for you guys to consider. With that, I'll quit, I'll answer any questions, and I would like to ask, please, Mr. Chairman, since we do, I know we have some people here that want to speak to this, to have the opportunity to try to respond to any questions or concerns they may raise.
All right, that'll be fine. Any questions of the applicant? Anyone?
Yeah, I was going to ask one. In the middle of the page, on page two, a proposed amendment to the... In the middle of the page, on page two, a proposed amendment to neighborhood policy M, the very last sentence is where you're stating that these provisions of the future land use amendment results in a retention of a degree of office uses as provided under extent, extent existing office transition, future land use designation. On 2.47 acres, what do you consider a degree? Is that a 50% you would talk?
Larry, I didn't, unfortunately, you lost me at the beginning of where you were, where were you reading from?
On page two.
Of the staff report?
Yes.
Okay.
The proposed amendment to neighborhood policy M.
Yep.
And the very last sentence. And in that sentence, it's talking about retention of a degree of office uses. And that, my question, what do you consider a degree of?
Yeah, that's, that's not my language, so I'd, I'd be hard-pressed to explain completely. But that's the staff's language. But I think what, what it's trying to say is that, that part of the project will be office and part of it will be retail. So the degree is at least 50%.
And that's what 50%?
At least 50%.
Where is that mentioned in here?
If you look at the, if you look at the, the bottom of, of, of the page there, neighborhood M, the new language that's underlined at the bottom there, maximum gross floor area dedicated to restaurant retail shall be, not exceed the aggregate of 50%.
Yeah, gotcha.
So that's the limitation.
That language comes right out of your submittal. It says that the applicant states that, so that was taken from the material you submitted on the.
Well, then the explanation I gave must be accurate. It's, the, the degree is, is at least 50%. It's been a while since I wrote that, I suppose.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Bob, when this came before us earlier, there was, there were comments made by the school board about placing an eatery in that position and the students back and forth. Where is the school board now with this project?
Like I said, we, we actually had a pretty, a real good meeting with them at Mainland High School last week, and we're, we're in ongoing conversations with them about ways that we can enhance both the bus facility there, because I think a lot of the kids ride the Votran that's, that's right in front of our site, as well as the crossing, because a lot of them go back and forth to Daytona State. They're in the joint program. So they're thinking that if we can work together, try to get a, a safe crossing of ISB somewhere near our location, they're likely gonna be having lunch there, maybe running across to Daytona State and coming back. So we're working through those, those logistics and, as well as the, the pedestrian communication between our property and theirs, they're right next door to us, so.
So they seem to be amenable?
I think so. And unfortunately, I don't think anybody is here tonight from the school.
I don't see her.
Sarah Lee, Sarah Lee, I think may, may be here or give us something in terms of a letter prior to, to the zoning piece coming forward. I think that, you know, their comments will be more about the actual plan and the way the plan works in conjunction with the school. So that's what I'm looking forward to having. So when we come back with the PCD, I'll, I'll have that for you, I hope.
Was not liquor also a concern at a restaurant that Sarah Lee brought up?
We've had some conversations about that, and I think the restriction on actually having a liquor sales retail operation versus having beer and wine opportunities in a restaurant is, is where we're gonna probably end up on that. But again, until we start talking about, that, that wouldn't be something we'd include in the comprehensive plan. That'd be something that's gonna be in a PD that you guys can debate or, I think, well, I think we'll be coming to you guys holding hands on that issue, Larry. So we'll, we'll talk about that when we talk about the PD.
Any other questions of the, of, yeah, the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody, I, by the way, I think, Mr. Hollab, would you like to talk? I noticed you have it. You have a green sheet here.
Can you jump over here?
Would you rather wait till later? It's up to you.
I would rather wait till the neighbor speaks. Thank you.
Ash, I want to mention ahead of time that we do have a rather long agenda tonight, and we would appreciate it if you would, you would actually be as succinct as you can about your comments. Now, I'd like to hear from anybody who would be for this issue. Does anybody like to speak for the issue? Yes, sir, will you come forward? And would you state your name and address for us, please?
Good evening. My name is Fred Favorite. My address is 100 Tarragona Way. It's the house directly behind the Tarragona Arch. We were at the homeowners' meeting with Mr. Hollab and this other gentleman just a couple of weeks ago, and he tried to explain to all of us, the neighbors, and the neighbors from the association, who were completely against everything, by the way. But I spoke up and said I was not against it, and neither I or my partner are against it, because we feel that it's an addition. And knowing Mr. Hollab's abilities and what he's done already, we've seen his shopping, his plaza up in Ormond, been to the restaurant, which is number one, high-quality, and I believe it could be a wonderful asset to our neighborhood. The only people that it would affect directly would be Gary Kemer and the other gentleman next to Gary's house. That's the two little houses in the back of the property. So they would know there'd be a wall right behind their property. But in the meantime, I believe the zoning also makes their houses available to be office space like now. I think it, it's already office, office space. So in other words, if they would want to, if this goes through, sell their two properties for an office, they could very easily do that and not live there. I would imagine that's what I might do if I owned it. But I do like our neighborhood. I've only lived there for 12 years, but I think it's a great neighborhood. I've got wonderful neighbors, and I hope that something can be done with this property. I think it's about time something should be done with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Larry McDermott, 1016 Belair Drive, Daytona Beach. Don't live near the property, but I've lived in Daytona Beach, let's see, I'm 63, 61 years. But I do have something I do want to say constructively. One, I need to make two caveats. One, I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Advisory Board. I'm not speaking concerning that. However, we do like to see good quality economic development in Daytona Beach. Number two, the company that I work for, Intercostal Bank, has financed this property, okay? But that has nothing to do with it what I'm speaking of today. I drive around a lot in the Volusia County area, doing what I do for a living. And I see what you call salt tooth development, where you have a decent development on a major arterial highway. Then you have a bunch of either vacant land or old homes that have been made, and you don't have to go very far, you can go right down on US 1 and see a bunch of these, where you'll see a bunch of older businesses, okay? And it's been like that for 20 years, okay? And you get further degraded and further degraded. Paul Hollab started developing in the middle eighties in Ormond Beach. He's done some development in Port Orange. If you go to those places today, 25, maybe 30 years later, they're still the good, they're still probably better-looking than just about anything else of that age in our area, okay? The other thing I think that Rob brought up was that this is a man and a company that's from Daytona Beach. They're not gonna be developing from out of town, develop, then go back out of town. He'll drive by that place, okay? He'll know that it's being well-kept. He'll, he'll understand that, that if he has any problems with lighting, appearance of the facility, landscaping, whatever else, it'll be handled in a timely fashion. And I think that's very valuable, because that's what we want in this area, going putting my economic development hat back on, is good quality development that is spawned from people who live in our community. And that's what I, that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in favor?
Bob, you never have one for those in the middle. John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. At the last meeting, I went up to Granada to see the project they had up there. Remember, there was a presentation of that? It is a quality project. I have no doubt that this one would be almost as good. We have a propensity in the city of Daytona Beach not to get the quality that Ormond gets or Port Orange gets. We settle for second best. I'm hoping he gives us the same quality that they did up in Ormond. But there's a, gotta be something going there sometime. It's been vacant way too long. Unlike Bud Asher, I'm not gonna say, I don't care what goes there as long as something goes there. We want something of quality, and it's true. If you look at the projects that are along that strip, Lance, what, 17 years ago, was going to put his office, the houses were torn down, the trees were cut down, and nothing's gone in. So since the Kevin Cole building went in, not Kevin Cole, what was his name, the attorney that died? Kevin Campbell. Since his building went up, that's the last one. Nothing's gone there since, and that's a very, very long time. I came before you last time with several problems, one of which are the trees. And since that time, the mall has bulldozed all their trees. Now, there's a wild olive and there's a Bahama breeze. So I looked at it again, and from the high school, which happened to bulldoze all their trees, there's a little bit in front of the college, but there are no trees to speak of from their property all the way to 95. Once you hit the park from Nova, all the way in, there are no trees. So my issue in terms of what was supposed to be that Greenway, it's not there anymore. So that's kind of died. Hopefully, they'll put a lot of trees in the back for the neighbors, but I'm not really concerned about the, the issue of the trees. I have a problem with the restaurant. I can't see with the high school being there, a, I don't wanna say high-class restaurant going in there, but it's not gonna be tapping or anything of that nature. It will probably be a fast-food restaurant, because the kids don't have a lot of time. So they're gonna come in and out, which is the problem for the neighborhood. If there's any way that you can guarantee, the, the higher the quality, the less possibility the kids are gonna go in, and two, the less possibility there's gonna be liquor purchased, which is a major concern. The property, whatever you can do, it's a small property. If you've walked it, there's not a whole heck of a lot of property there. So if he can put in a project, more power to him, whatever he can get in there, as many square footages he possibly can. So I'm asking you to approve this, but listen to the neighbors, do you have much landscaping to protect them from the back, and watch the restaurant? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak against? If you'd like to come forward, please. I've got them. Is that what? Oh, yeah, I'm going. I have to mention again that, again, don't forget to sign that form, fill out that form. Do it right, oh, you did it already?
Yes, I turned one in.
Okay.
Okay. Gary Kemer, 1144 Cordova Avenue. I'm the person who's most affected by this, because I'm right in the middle of it. I'm actually gonna try to keep things short here tonight, and I'll tell you why, why later. But I just want to mention a couple of points. First of all, would any of you folks who bought a residential home in a residential neighborhood, would any of you folks like to have retail and restaurants built right on two sides of your resident, residential house? Just, that's the situation I'm faced with. Secondly, as was pointed out by the attorney here, well, first of all, I wanted to make the point that the planning board was right when they made, years ago, they designated this as a, a large setback, green space. As the attorney pointed out here, things have changed since that time. A couple of major things have changed. For one thing, there's a lot less green space than there was before, which means we need it more than we did before, not less. And it's, and it is indeed a busy thoroughfare, people coming in there. The tourists come in primarily through that area, past the Speedway towards the beach. All the more reason why we should have large setbacks in a green space there, because the tourists are passing that. Another thing that's changed is that we now have a glut of real, of retail. By putting in more retail, you're actually threatening the retail businesses that are coming up with this Daytona One project. It means more competition to them. We, we don't need a retail operation so close inside, jutting inside our neighborhood. The original zoning for retail is about a third of a mile east of there and about a third of a mile west of there, where there's plenty of parking, there's no problems, there's established retail. That's where the retail belongs. It should be right there. We don't need restaurants, we don't need smelly restaurants inside our neighborhood. I'm gonna keep this short, because I've already passed out to you folks. I'm sure you've gotten literature from the developers. Here's a little bit of literature from our side, and I just ask you to be fair and consider this also, as you've considered the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against? I got somebody coming up. I'll get you next. Next, don't forget to sign a form. Did you sign a green form?
Yes, I did. My name is, my name is Robert Kelly. I'm the president of the Daytona Highlands Neighborhood Association, and I live at 1110 Loomis Avenue. The Neighborhood Association is, is very strongly opposed to, to this project, or really opposed to a change in the, the land use plan. Mr. Merrill was very eloquent in his description of the project and the neighborhood, but I'd, I'd like to take issue with the facts that, that, about the borders of this neighborhood. It is in truth bordered by International Speedway Boulevard. It's in truth bordered by Nova Road. But if you look at, at the Nova Road side, there's Tuscaloosa Park, there's an apartment complex, and there's the very beautiful and dynamic Museum of Arts. If you look at the south side of that neighborhood, there's Museum Boulevard. If you look at the west side of the neighborhood, it's a kind of a stretch to say we're bordered by Clyde Morris, because Embry-Riddle is there, and then there is a buffer, which was shrunk some years ago. But there is a buffer between the neighborhood and Embry-Riddle. So really, there is, on no side is that neighborhood bordered by a project like this that includes retail. And, and I think that the other point that's been made tonight is the, the quality of Mr. Hollab's developments, and they have, they are high-quality developments. I've had the opportunity, he's been gracious enough to, to show me some of those. The fact is that none of those border a high school. And while Mr. Hollab, while, while Mr. Merrill presented the situation with the school as, as, as a little more amicable than, than I think it is, I also spoke with Sarah Lee Morrissey, and I can tell you that the school remains concerned about the attraction of a development like that to, to its students. Those students travel back and forth between Daytona State College and Mainland. There is some concern about the, the street crossings there. There's some concern about the attraction of that as opposed to going to class for students. We in the neighborhood are concerned about the attraction of, of a fast-food, I believe a Subway-type restaurant is proposed, a sub-shop kind of restaurant is proposed. We're concerned about that as an attraction to children. We're concerned about that as a generator of litter in the neighborhood. And we would ask for you to consider those things. You're not gonna hear from the school district. It's spring break, and, and people from the school district are not, not around. But we in the neighborhood, in, in large numbers, are greatly opposed to this, and we hope that you'll, you'll consider that, that there needs to be a balance in this community, I think, between a vibrant economy and commerce. Absolutely, we all depend on that. But the city also depends on livability, on, on being an attractive place for people to live. And we are the people who love Daytona Beach. We're the people who live in Daytona Beach. We are some of the people, the city would like to have more, who spend money on Beach Street and the places where we're trying to inject life into this community. And I think that, that we in the neighborhood occupy a very special place. And when you think about coming down International Speedway Boulevard, as a new person comes into this community, they see Mainland High School, beautiful new Mainland High School. They see Daytona State College. You look around a little farther, you see Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, you see Tuscaloosa Park, you see the Museum of Arts. That's a powerful statement about what our community is. You see a livable neighborhood. You see a neighborhood with large setbacks. You see a neighborhood that's, that has generations of people who live there and love it. And we need to count on, on you as members of the planning board to protect that aspect of our community. And I think that aspect of our community is very important. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, would you want to come up now, please?
I'll keep my comments brief as well. I wanted to thank the planning board for allowing the opportunity for us to address you this evening. I live in, in neighborhood M, which is the Highlands. I live in, in Neighborhood M, which is the Highlands, started in nineteen, built in nineteen twenty-eight, which wasn't-
What is your name and address?
I'm sorry, Ted Thompson, at eleven seventeen Cedar Street.
Got it.
I live in the Highlands. I built my house fifty-two years after the gentleman's house was the first house built in the Highlands. It's a quality neighborhood, I've raised my children there, built my home in nineteen eighty-three. I worked for Embry-Riddle, I'm familiar with the traffic, I'm familiar with the children running across the street, people making U-turns, and I feel that any change to the plan that is currently in place is going in the wrong direction. I have made some comments in writing, and I've made copies for all the planning board members. I appreciate your hours tirelessly to work in behalf of Daytona Beach, and I know you have families too, and your time is valuable, so I want to keep it brief, but my, me and my family are definitely against any change to the plan.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Next, please. Yes.
I'm Oliver Jean Wagner, and I live at eleven thirty-five Orange Avenue. And we've been there for quite some time, we're actually snowbirds, but we've owned the house for a long time, and we have, as we'd like to keep this neighborhood as historical community. And as I see it right now, the traffic is going down Orange Avenue is quite a bit, when we build this here complex, it's going to be a lot worse, because there's no way in this world that they're all going to be going out on the International Speedway. They're going, some are going to be going down, around, they're going down Orange Avenue. And I also would like to know why this building is more being also done in need to more to add restaurants to it, when we have restaurants all over the place. I mean, you could just go anywhere in the world, and you won't see any more restaurants than on the United States International Speedway. And that's going to be another, another attraction there. So, we, I would just like to comment, I hope that the commissioners will understand what we're trying to do in our community.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Anybody else, please?
I don't know where Elizabeth, can you, Mary? The information the previous speaker wanted the board members to have, I just need you to hand those out to the board members.
Yes, ma'am. Your name and address. Did you fill out a form?
Yes, I did.
Is there just one?
And would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Phyllis Hogan, and I reside at eleven twelve Balboa Avenue. I'm the secretary for the Daytona Highlands Association. I've also been a resident of our city since nineteen fifty-five, and I've lived in the Highlands since nineteen sixty-two. I love the city, I love our neighborhood, and that's the reason my husband and I choose to live there. I'm here before you again, just like I was two years ago. The visionaries of our city are forward-thinking, and they had a vision when they created the future land use map. The area under discussion is currently classified as office transition. In my opinion, it was a good plan then, and it's a good plan now. To change it to low-intensity commercial, I don't feel is. We went through this two years ago, and the planning board, as well as the city commission, didn't think so either. The roadway adjacent to Neighborhood M has been described as a scenic corridor. By definition, a scenic corridor protects from encroachment of inappropriate land use. A scenic corridor protects and enhances natural beauty, and in my, again, in my opinion, another strip center with concrete and stucco doesn't meet this criteria. Now, don't get me wrong, Mr. Hollab is a businessman, he's a very nice guy, I like him. He purchased the property to develop it, and no offense to him, but back in twenty-twelve, Mr. Hurt, Ms. Washington, you, Mr. Hoitsma, Mr. Moore, Ms. Washington, you, you all voted against his plan. And in my humble opinion, I think he's board shopping. There's several new people here, as well as new city commissioners. So, I just ask that you respectfully go along with what the previous determination was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Good evening. My name is Carol Bristow, and I live at six zero nine Tarragona Way. I have been there since, I guess, nineteen fifty-three, when my parents meant the house. I moved away and then moved back, and enjoy being back in the neighborhood. So, I'm now involved in, I guess, talking about this issue. I do have a real problem with the transition of making a restaurant there, fast food or whatever it is. I was also an employee of Mainland High School and saw multiple children, I won't even say multiple, can't even name them or count them, coming off of the street, running across ISB, not going to necessarily the college, but they would go off, just jaywalking across. So, there's going to be some serious issues, you say, back and forth, a safe way. That's not going to happen, it's already going on now. Then, they leave the school, because I've seen it, and go into the area off of that central, into the woods that's there, which is his property now. They have been caught smoking and doing other things in that area, we've had to reel them all the way back, and now if we put a restaurant in there where they can linger, hang out, and do their thing, there's no telling what's going to happen in that area, because we had to actually physically go in that area and take those kids away and bring them back to the school property. So, there is going to be a bit of an issue there. The other thing that I have a problem is, is the bus loops coming out of Mainland Avenue. I know that school comes in at, in the morning, and goes out in the afternoon, and so consequently, you could possibly get around that with some kind of commercial ability there, but there's also a bus stop there, and a lot of those kids go across that street, wait at that particular bus stop, and also walk up to the other bus stop at the other end by White Street, where the archway is. So, I have a concern about that, because there's already been some rear-end collisions there because of stopping for the bus. The other problem I have are the driveways coming out of the commercial property. There's proposed, we saw the drawing, of two driveways coming out. I have a problem with sight distance of coming into it and sight distance going out with left-turn lanes or people coming out of one of the driveways, crossing over three lanes of traffic to get to the left-turn lane to make a U-turn to go westbound on ISB. There's going to be some considerable accidents there, because people are not patient and waiting coming out of the driveway, and they just cut right across, go around, and take it. So, I do have some of that, some problems with that. I also have some problems with intrusion and unwanted traffic in the neighborhood. People will go down Central Avenue, go down to Orange Avenue, and go straight out Orange Avenue. I know, because I do it to go down to my house at six oh nine Tarragona, because I'm at the other end of six oh nine. So, I have a problem with that. I would like to see traffic flows, charts, providing how the traffic flow is going to go in. I would like to see that. Also, I'd like to see how the turn lane sight distance is, because there's an uphill grade westbound, and I don't know what the sight distance would be if they put a left turn in great, left turn into that from where State, Daytona State College is over here to turn in, because if you're stopped at the light at White Street in Tarragona, you never know what's going to, I mean, you're coming up that hill, and there's, we're Highlands, that's why we're the Highlands, okay? So, that's one of the highest spots. So, I do have a problem in that. I also have a problem, and they spoke about it architecturally. The city spent millions of dollars to move the archway. When it first was built, it was two archways over ISB. They knocked down the one to get ISB. Then they moved, we had Tarragona still there. They wanted to knock down that one, and we fought to keep it. So, the city spent lots of money to have engineers come in and move it. So, I don't want some white elephant of a building going in there that would take away from what the archway is, because that is, that's designated, designated historical. And so, I'd like to see something done with that. And then the other thing is, we've been told that there's going to be a retention pond back in the area to help with that. How is that pond or that area going to be maintained by the city when things, if things were to happen in there? Are they going to have to come in on property? How are they going to come in on the property, and what are they going to do? So, I really appreciate you coming here, I have some other points, but I'll make it really short on that. I really appreciate you letting me address you tonight, because, like I said, I've moved back to the neighborhood, I want to live my life there, and I want my kids coming back into my house down in that end of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Roland Blossom. I reside at one one seven one Orange Avenue, Daytona Beach. I've lived at that address since nineteen eighty-seven. I've been back in Daytona Beach since nineteen seventy-six, born here in Volusia County and raised in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. But as soon as I was big enough to tie my own shoes, so to speak, to pull on my own bootstraps, my wife and I relocated to this area, and we were fortunate enough to find a house in the Daytona Highlands. Our house is at the very end, the very west end of Orange Avenue, at the south end of Ponce de Leon, directly next door to the buffer zone between Embry-Riddle and the Daytona Highlands, right next door to Mainland High School. So, as you can see, we're right in the core of a spot that requires us to fight constantly to preserve what we have. We in that neighborhood have had battles that go far before I took residence there, and those battles that we have had to fight have not been with the city or with the county. It's been with others who have attempted to erode the quality of life that's there. It's a wonderful place. Before we bought the house, I had been in Daytona Beach, back in Daytona Beach for about thirteen years, and until two months before we bought the house that we bought, I had never been in that neighborhood. Now, understand that where we lived and where my office was located, and we still own the building just, just to the south of here, just next door, we were constantly in that neighborhood, but we never went through. And we never went through because there was nothing to attract us there, and consequently, that neighborhood has been preserved since the nineteen twenties. We have third-generation people who are coming back to that neighborhood to live, because it's not been deteriorated by the intrusion of other types of uses that erode the quality of life. Now, I understand full well what Mr. Hollab is trying to do, but what he's trying to do is contrary to what we're trying to do. He bought that property about three years ago, according to his attorney, and when he bought that property, he understood what the future land use map showed it to be, he understood what the element was, and he bought it with the, that he could change it. Well, it was a neighborhood that we didn't want changed. Those who have been there, and there really have been people there for fifty, sixty years, who would like to continue the life that they have and would like to preserve the residential character of a neighborhood that has lasted, and lasted to an extent where people who were raised there are now coming back there to live. Now, that's very unusual. It's one, it's like, it's like, and I'm older now, so I can't remember everything I want to remember, but it's like the egg that the Russian czars had commissioned, that was speckled with jewels and beautiful eggs. And you see, once you start taking the jewels out of that egg, you destroy what it is. A small chink in the edge of this neighborhood will create the possibility that pretty soon down the road, there would be another chink, and another chink, and another, and pretty soon, we don't have what we love here in this city of value. So, we're simply asking you to recognize that the change that's being asked for is not the change of someone who has been there for generations, but the change of someone who just came in. Those who have been there, we love it there, and we would like to maintain that character.
Thank you very much. Please, no, we don't need applause, we don't need to do that. Want to hear from anybody else like to speak against? Yes, ma'am.
I did a term one in earlier.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Kelly, and I live at eleven ten Loomis. I didn't think I had anything else to add, which is why I hadn't filled one out earlier, but in listening and thinking about it, I thought, well, this is really important to me, this point that I hadn't mentioned before. I was a single parent when I bought my first home in Daytona Beach, and I bought it on Seneca Boulevard. Small house, raised my two daughters by myself, it was a wonderful place for them to live. When I remarried ten years ago, my husband and I decided we needed a bigger house, combining families, and we decided, I said, this neighborhood is awesome, the Highlands is a great neighborhood, it's so central, everybody lives in Ormond or Port Orange, nobody wants to live in Daytona, but this is, this is a beautiful neighborhood. So, we sold the house on Seneca and bought our second house in the neighborhood, and now, we're starting to wonder if we should sell it, if the neighborhood goes downhill. I mean, the neighborhood is a great neighborhood, but it's not perfect, and it's shaky, and if one straw would break the camel's back, it's not going to be a great neighborhood, and that's why we're all so concerned, because we do love it there. I would like my kids to come back and buy a house in that neighborhood when they start their families as well.
All right, so you don't want anything in there?
I don't know that I don't want anything there.
What don't you want?
The concern of the neighborhood is restaurants and retail that would add traffic, impart vehicular and pedestrian, because there are apartment buildings boarding our neighborhood, and there is concern. We don't want there to be any more reason for there to be traffic through our neighborhood.
So, the major concern would be for retail and restaurants?
I both, I believe that's the major concern, is that the current land use doesn't allow for that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, do you want to follow?
I'm going to be real brief. I want to start by saying I appreciate truly all the comments that were made tonight, some of these folks I've known, and I've had many friends that live in this neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. Like I said at the beginning, I don't think what I'm proposing to you tonight in any way is going to detrimentally affect these folks. I know they believe that. The good news is, this gentleman here has a lot of stories that are exactly like this one. This is, this is about the fifteenth or twentieth chapter in a book this guy will write, hopefully someday, about these kind of hearings. The first one I handled with him, I think, was in the, in the mid nineteen eighties upon Granada. And, and, you know, I heard Roland Blossom characterize Paul's purchase of this property as maybe something that was risky and speculative, and he ought to be punished by not getting what, what the market would, would require him to build here to be successful. And I don't, he didn't certainly say it that way, I'm sorry, Roland, you didn't say that. I read it that way, and what I want to say about that is, you know, I watched this guy, who's similar in age to me as a young man, used some foresight along Granada Boulevard, which is in my neighborhood, and watched it grow and knew it was growing, just like we have forty-three thousand cars a day on this boulevard that he bought this property on, and knew that there were going to be opportunities to do things that capitalized on those trips going by every day, which he did, and he has successfully. And I have to tell you, there are stories and stories about the people who lived immediately adjacent, between you and I, Bob, to the project that he was doing on Granada primarily. And those people today come out and sing his praises, who still live there, who go to his stores or go to the office buildings where the, where the dentist is that they go to by foot or bicycle sometimes, where they didn't have the opportunity before. So, I just, I want you to know that that's who you're dealing with here. A lot of the comments, I'm not going to spend time going into, in large part because they're site plan comments, I mean, comments about transportation circulation, pedestrians, where are they going to go, how are they going to get in and out, you know, things about the trees and the preservation of trees. We're going to bring you a real nice plan next month and show you, if we get your endorsement tonight, a plan that I think you'll like. You'll like the architecture, you'll like the quality of the development, you'll like the buffering. You'll like the trees. And I'm going to bring those to you, but I'm not going to get into it with you tonight, unless you want to ask me questions about it. A lot of the comments about protecting green space and making it look presentable, I mean, I think Tuscaloosa Park looks great. It's a park, though. We bought it. We decided that's what we wanted to do. We used our tax dollars and bought it. That's not what's happening here. We got a guy who's used his private money to buy this property and wants to do it with something that will enhance the neighborhood in the sense that part of his neighborhood is International Speedway Boulevard. Maybe not part of theirs, but part of his. He's on that edge. I wanted to make sure I responded to some of the comments about traffic impacts, because we will talk about circulation, where the driveways are, how cars come in and out of the site when we bring you the plan. But I want to tell you and remind you that your consultant stood up here, your planner, Elizabeth, stood up here at the beginning of this discussion and said, this is, what's before you tonight will represent a reduction in trips. So, it couldn't be any clearer. If you look at the transportation analysis that was done for the comp plan proposal, that's before you tonight, is it a reduction in trips from what's there now? Of course not. There's nothing there now. Is it a reduction in trips from what could be there now under the existing future land use? Absolutely. Clear as can be. Nobody's told you otherwise with any evidence that you can rely on. The last thing I want to mention is this business of board shopping or playing games with you guys. I'm back here just about every month. You know, I can't do that. I can't afford to do that. You know, what we're doing here tonight is coming to you with something different that we believe, as I said at the beginning, represents a compromise. Instead of 100% retail and restaurant, which is what Paul wanted to do when he bought this property, he's agreed to reduce it to less than half. It allows him to do something here and actually be able to build a building. If you say no to him, nothing's going to happen here. And I think that some of the smart folks in the audience know that. They know Paul can't lease it for 100% office, so if they say, we love office, not retail or restaurant, nothing will happen. I don't think you guys want that to happen. I know, especially the business minds among you that know that if you've got a good businessman who is doing good things, encourage him. Give him an incentive. Don't discourage him. And when we come back to you next month, we can talk about things that you'd like to do to make this project better or different. If you read the letters that were given to you by the mayors of Ormond that he's dealt with in the past years, you'll see that he's flexible and he's willing to work with you.
Thank you.
So, I'll leave with that, and with that, I'll give you Paul Hollup.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Paul Hollup, and I reside at 675 North Beach Street. A lot of my comments will be related to the site plan, just as in response to some of the comments from the neighborhood. First of all, when we bought this property, we did a concept plan, and we went to the market. We didn't go to the market and look for retail or look for restaurant. We looked for tenants, and we looked for office tenants in bank and medical tenants. And we've done that since, actually, 2011, when we closed on the property. We have not been successful in securing enough tenants for the project in the office professional arena. The medical tenant is really non-existent right now on a small scale for a lot of reasons. And the office professional tenant, the, you know, the lawyers and professionals, insurance companies, they don't want to be on ISB because of the traffic. And because of it, they're going to secondary roads like Williamson and Clyde Morris. We just built for Humana a medical office on Clyde Morris Boulevard, just finished it, in Daytona Beach. We tried to get them to come to this location, and they said, no, they would rather be on a secondary street for their patients. And they discounted even considering ISB. So, we didn't come here to lease the property for restaurant retail. We looked for office tenants. We looked for professional tenants. We do have some that will go to the project. We don't have enough to fill the project. We do have a, one of your more retail-type dental, like your Heartland Dentals and those type of things. We have a dental office that is looking at it, but it's more of a retail dentist office. We have an eye care doctor, but it's, again, more of a retail eye doctor location, like a LensCrafters, that would come to this location. We don't have enough to fill it. As far as the bus loops and those type of things, the bus is at 7:30 in the morning and 2:30 in the afternoon, and it is clearly off-peak hours at our center when those buses operate. Our parking lots are empty at 7:30 in the morning. Matter of fact, right now, the parents are dropping the kids off, a lot of them, on Cordova Street at the back of this property in the Highlands neighborhood. They're welcome to use our parking lot to drop the children off and pick them back up in the afternoon, rather than park in the street. Because if, I don't know if all of you know Cordova, though, the street is very narrow. It's not built to current standards, and it's very hard to get two-way traffic through it. So, it is a problem back there right now for the Mainland High School, for the parents that drop off the kids. And we've met with the school, and we told them they're welcome to use our parking lot for drop-off and pickup. We have no issue with it. The driveways, those are all FDOT approval, and we meet with DOT, will comply with the requirements, and whatever they allow us to do has to be reviewed by them, has to be designed by our traffic engineers and our civil engineers, and we will comply with that. You've got to understand, whether this is a 100-unit apartment complex, which I believe 40 units are allowed now to the acre, so whether there's 100 apartment units there or 75,000 square-foot office building, three stories, which I believe three stories allowed, we're going to have traffic. We designed our site plan, which you don't see tonight, to contain all the traffic from our project out to ISB. We don't have any intrusion into the neighborhood. We don't have any access into the neighborhood. We've got a wall or a fence that surrounds our property. We did meet with Mainland High School, Dr. Solano and Sarah Lee Morrissey, and we had a great meeting. There were three top concerns. One was pedestrian access across the street to Daytona College for some of the students that do the joint program. The other was the bus stop, which right now, there's a bus stop there, and the kids sit on asphalt pavement. There's not even a bench. I met with Votran this past Monday, and we agreed to build a Votran bus stop there with a canopy and a bench, similar to the one, I believe, the city built just to the east. And Sarah Lee and I are going to DOT on April 9th to talk to them about the pedestrian issue, and I think Daytona State College is coming along with us to discuss that. And we're going to work on that and try to come up with some solution, because the kids, when they leave, they have a signalized pedestrian access at Clyde Morris, and they have one at White Street, but they don't use either one because it's more, it's a shorter route to go down to Central Street and try to run across to Daytona College. It's unfortunate. It does occur. It occurs whether there's apartments here, whether there's office buildings here, whether there's a retail establishment with a mix of office and retail. It happens now with the lot vacant. So, we're trying to address those, and Sarah Lee and I have had numerous discussions since that meeting. We've exchanged a lot of emails, and we're trying to come up with some solutions on that. Their third problem was, well, if the kids go to your store, your center, they're going to be late getting back to school. Well, we found out something interesting. You're not allowed to leave the school campus for lunch unless you're a junior or senior, and you're not allowed to leave by foot, only by car. And I said, well, I see a lot of kids cross ISB, go to the McDonald's. They run across ISB at lunchtime. How does that happen? And she says, well, it happens. They're not supposed to, but it happens. Well, yes, if there's a Subway here or a pizza store, they won't be crossing ISB anymore. And I can't get them back to school on time. That's not my job. That's the school. That's the parents. That's the students. But yes, they may come to this center, but they won't be crossing ISB. But they're not supposed to leave unless they're in a vehicle. As far as this particular building, it will be our flagship building. It'll be nicer than anything we've ever built. The hardscape features, the architectural features, leaps and bounds beyond anything that we've ever built before. I can assure you of that. And not only that, the tenants that we're going to attract will be, a lot of them will be national tenants. Everyone that has approached us on the retail side or the restaurant side is either a new restaurant or retailer that's not in the area, or it's an extension of it for another location. It is not a relocation. We're not going to take a business in Daytona Beach and relocate them into our center. All of the LOIs that we have and all of the interests we had is from new businesses coming to the area. Trees, we're planting 90 trees on this property, 2,300, 2,300 plants and shrubs. You will not see, if you go up and down ISB, except for some of the very new stuff, you won't see landscaping like we're putting onto this property. We already are restricting bars. We're restricting alcohol, retail sale of alcohols, such as an ABC store or something like that. We don't want that in our center. Our tenants restrict that on us. They don't, they won't come to us. A national tenant won't come to us if we try to put in a bar or a pool hall or something like that. We maintain our properties. I know you talked about litter. We maintain our properties. Retail properties like this, we're there every day. We have people that work for us around the clock. We're there every day. We are responsive. We met with Gary Kemmer today, and quite honestly, I wish I had met with him a long time ago, because some things came up that I didn't know. Cordova in the back is a 70-foot right-of-way. All of the trees on the right-of-way on Cordova, it's, there's 30, 40 feet of extensive vegetation that's been there for 30, 40 years. We have a sidewalk planned for the back of the property. A lot of those trees are going to have to come out. We talked to the city today. We said, can we remove the sidewalk and just pay into the sidewalk fund? I don't believe Highlands wants the sidewalk. And if we're able to do that, we will be able to save a lot of those trees. So, a lot of things are in motion. We're still working towards perfecting the site plan, but we ask that you support the comp plan amendment as the first step, and we'll continue to work with the neighborhood and with the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hang on, that'll close down the public discussion. Board, what are some of your thoughts? Actually, do you mean we don't have any thoughts?
No, I think we don't have thoughts, you know, that's been addressed, you know, from both sides.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm torn with it for a couple of reasons. You know, this has been before us two times before. This is very much the same plan that was here last time, with the exception of reduced, you know, to 50%, and that does make a difference. There's no question. I have to say, I really feel that it being office transition is the correct designation for that property. So, I have difficulty changing that to what they require. The other side of it is, I traveled Granada four or five times, going and coming, and he has two excellent strip malls in the area. I call them strip malls, but very well done, maintained. And I think about traffic, and Granada's heavily traveled, but it's two lanes, and what we're talking about here is more heavily traveled, and three lanes. And I understand what you're saying. By making that change, it's not as much traffic it is otherwise could be, but I'm torn. The other side of it, too, is we've got the oldest neighborhood in the city of Daytona Beach. They have been very active for many years, and deservedly so. And I don't take that lightly either. So, I'm quite truthfully very torn. I see pros and cons both ways, so I don't want to.
Okay. Again, I'm pretty much like Mr. Moore, pretty much torn between it. One of the greatest concern I'll have is the traffic congestion, the safety issues with our citizens going back and forth, and I know those things will be addressed later on. It's just a lot of information, and certainly want to be respectful to the citizens in that area, and living in an area that's not bombarded with high traffic and retail and so forth. But the other side is, when you look at the city and the progression our city is making, the progress our city is making in the vision of our city, it's been vacant land for a long time. It certainly brings business and revenue to our city, and so, again, it's a toss-up pretty much for me, but those are concerns that I have for both sides, and I certainly respect both sides, and certainly appreciate each of them sharing. That's my toss.
I'm in the same position. I voted against this project twice before, and just last week, I passed the lot, and I wondered, when was something going there? As I listen to the questions or the comments from the residents, having spoken with a large number of them on the last project, with them decreasing what they were going to do originally, it makes a big difference. I think about what the project would offer, and I guess I should preface all of it by saying, being one of the few original Daytonians. I've been here from day one. I have a nephew that says I've been here since 1900 God. But I remember the homes that were there that were torn down. I was crushed. I was a child, but I was crushed because it was a scenic view. But having that vacant lot there now, I'm wondering, when are we going to put something there? I listened to the residents, and I agree with them totally on not wanting the encroachment into their neighborhood. But it looks as if Mr. Hollup has tried so hard to accommodate the neighbors. He's made some changes and some concessions. I understand the foot traffic. I understand the traffic from the cars going down Central Avenue. I take that way quite frequently myself, because I live off of Bellevue. So, much has changed. I love that neighborhood. It, to me, it's a pristine neighborhood, and it really reminds me of old Daytona. My problem is, something's got to go there. I can't see it being a continual desolate area. My concern really was how the school board felt, because they had some opposition last time, and to hear that they're willing to sit down and talk about it makes a difference. So, I'm torn. I understand what the neighbors want, and I've been fighting for everything they wanted in that area. But I'm also torn because, looking at the projects that Mr. Hollup has put up, they're just, they're awesome, and they're surviving. And we need something that's going to survive, not another project that's going to go up and then die.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to add a few thoughts to that. I'm new to the board, so I wasn't here when this has been presented before, but I do work with a lot of restaurants, and I work with a lot of businesses that are in strip malls, and I've heard those concerns plenty of times from residents, and it helps adjust where you're at. And it looks like there has been compromise, but I don't, it sounds like there's been quite a bit from the comments from both sides. But it does, I want to throw a thought out there that what it does do, when you do it right, is it creates a commercial border, and people don't tend to drive back in the neighborhoods when you give them a path to follow. And I've seen a lot of commercial strip malls do that, where they protect the neighborhood. So, it's hard to believe that, but it does happen quite a bit, and I've seen it all over this state and several states in the southeast. I think Granada's a good example of that, where you don't see people driving back in the neighborhood. So, it's an extremely valid concern, that you would think that that happens, and it does. There will be some people, but I think the opposite happens more likely, and I've seen it happen more likely where it keeps people out. And so, I like the idea of putting something, not just something there, but a nice commercial development that does offer a little bit more mixed use. And if you look at what could be there, it looks like it reduces the amount of potential impact, and I haven't, I don't know which projects are on normal. I've seen a lot on Granada, but if everybody's saying they're nice and they're beautiful, then I tend to agree with the people on the board that they probably are nice and beautiful. So, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make one statement. I do like the fact that they've cut down the size of what they want to do about the restaurant area, and really, I think the key to all of this is going to be next month, what we do to make sure we control it very well, and I think we can do that. Not that we're going to do it, we're going to encourage them to do it. So, I'm ready for, I'm ready for a motion.
We approve a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment here down in Shakopee, 2013-124.
One thing I want to point out to make clear, because there was a little confusion, I think, in our staff report relative to... think, in our staff report relative to where the applicant was and what they were proposing, I would suggest in terms of the neighborhood policy, you use what is on page two of the strike-through and underline for the neighborhood policy for neighborhood M, E, and the one. Staff had been working on a traffic assessment, had been looking at some different wording of this that led to the 60 percent, the applicant is, the wording on page two is neighborhood policy the applicant's recommending, so I would suggest that is what you move forward for.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion, and so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, so we know what.
Who did we get the second from?
No, that's on my ass. Who is the second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
And I'll take a roll call.
Certainly. Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Drago is absent. Ms. Washington, yes. Mr. Hoitzma?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Neal is absent. Mr. Barhood?
Yes.
Mr. Benedict?
Yes.
Okay, the recommendation will be for approval.
Thank you very much.
Tough, but I do think next one's going to be important. Hmm? Oh. Oh, no. No, I meant if it was approved, it's going to be very important as to what we do next month, the control, and if they really cut down, doesn't that mean we can get more landscaping or something around there that can't do that? Because you're going to...
I love that. I love it.
Okay, let's get moving again.
You didn't realize the boarding starts at 9:45.
What did he just say?
I just love 9:45.
Yeah, 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 I'll move quickly now. Fortunately, it's at 9:45, but, but I'm, I'm not sure I can stay up for a game like that.
No idea.
I wonder if I, I wonder if I can have you all move out when you're finished, please?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Please, please. Yes, can we hear from staff, please?
I didn't read it yet.
Huh?
You're moving too fast.
Oh, we don't have a motion?
We motioned.
Oh, you haven't read it yet.
Item number five.
Okay.
He's got to get back into the, into the swing of things. Rezoning, Plan Master Development, Second Amendment, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, Research Park East, FKA Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University Technology Park, DEV 2013-107, quasi-judicial hearing.
Actually, I just wanted to mention how important it is to have somebody like this right alongside.
Yes, it is.
Thank, can we hear, can we hear from staff, please?
Sure, thank you. Dennis Merzak Planer with the City of Daytona Beach. Again, this request is to rezone 77.5 acres of land located on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, and north of the Bevel Road, and south of Bellevue Avenue, amending the existing Plan Master Development Agreement and modifying the future development master plan. As always, we have a, we have an aerial for you, a location map showing the site east of Clyde Morris and south of Bellevue. We have an aerial also for you, shows that the site is primarily undeveloped, just recently they have done some minor modifications to the entrance to prepare for future development of the site. And again, the, the existing land use is general industrial. The site is currently zoned PMD or Plan Master Development, this will be an amendment to the existing Plan Master Development. The Embry-Riddle Research Park East is the new name, it was formerly known as the Embry-Riddle Technology Park, so we will be referring to it as the, the Research Park East. I believe in the future, we're going to be seeing a Research Park West also, so that's exciting news for Daytona Beach. Also, the tech park was, the PMD was approved in June of 2008 and amended in March of 2012, and that was done to address some tree removal and tree preservation requirements. As for the Plan Master Development, this is a unique district, and these are all attributes of a Plan Master Development, yeah, a unique district intended for large areas, this is 77.5 acres, it's intended for long-range planning development, and it is, encourages phased sequences of development. A currently existing comprehensive plan policy relates to this, to this property directly, and I wanted to kind of go through it a little bit and, and explain how it, how it applies to the proposed development and proposed modification. The comprehensive plan does limit uses in a comprehensive plan for this particular property, limit, limits it to aerospace industry-related fields and support industries. So when the applicant is extending or expanding the amount of uses that would be entitled on the property, they would still need to, to meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan. Also in the comprehensive plan is the requirement for a 50-foot buffer adjacent to the residential. No changes have been put in place to, to, to prevent that from happening. As a matter of fact, the, the plan that they presented keeps in place that 50-foot buffer. Also, in the comprehensive plan are requirements for high quality of design. Embry-Riddle has, has, has a, a nice history of doing some quality design on their, on their buildings, and we look forward to what they're able to do with the, the Technology Park or the Research Park. It must be a plan development, which it is, and it also, in the comprehensive plan, must meet city standards as it relates to noise, vibration, odors, and smoke, so these are things that, that are maybe not necessarily in the land development code, the PD agreement, but it is in the comprehensive plan, and it is a standard that they must comply with. As far as any proposed modifications or waivers that the applicant is requesting, uses, as I mentioned, they've added several specific uses, again, those uses must comply with the comprehensive plan. For parking, the, the applicant is requesting to, to allow a parking reduction with a parking study. If they're able to provide a parking study that demonstrated a parking reduction is possible, then, then they'd be allowed to have a, a parking reduction. Traffic impact analysis hasn't been turned in, it, there was not one done previously, this is something that can be deferred to the site plan stage. With each site plan that comes in, we'll be looking for a, a traffic impact analysis to make sure it, it's up to compliance. Building design standards, again, the city has very specific standards for building designs. Unfortunately, with some of the buildings over at Embry-Riddle, they don't always fit into the design standards, they, they're a little bit outside the box. They are required in the comprehensive plan to have high-quality design standards, not necessarily meeting to the T, the city code, but, but they will be held to those standards. And signage, they are proposing a change to the entry sign. Currently, the entry sign, I believe, allows for a 25-foot-high sign, it's either 20 or 25-foot, however, this particular sign that they're proposing is a little bit more unique. It's, in, in the way it looks, in, in the width, in the way you measure the area, so what we had them do is actually present exactly what it is that they're looking for, for that entrance sign, we'll put it into the Plan Master Development Agreement, and then they'd be able to take the sign and develop the, the, the site with the sign. This is a sign that we may be getting used to, I think they want to tie the properties together for Embry-Riddle, so we may see a sign similar to this at the main campus, and we may see a sign similar to this at the, at the other research park that they're As for recommendations, staff does recommend approval to amend the Embry-Riddle Research Park East Plan Master Development Agreement. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on May 7th and second reading on May 21st, 2014, and that will be a public hearing, and an affirmative vote of six by the Planning Board shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff? I have just one question now. Does, actually, does the clustering that's done, does that affect the buffer?
The clustering of the trees?
Yeah.
Uh, no, there would be no clustering of trees in the buffer areas, the only, the only area you'd find clustering will be along the right-of-way along Clyde Morris.
Okay, I just want to make sure it didn't encroach on the residential areas that were around there, and that's not a problem.
Those will stay in place.
And of course, the signs now, I think we've gone through this before, when you have a huge area to put a sign, it's much easier to handle one that's bigger than you have one sitting next to something else, and of course, I think we found out with Speedway, did we not?
Okay. I had a question for staff. Under the code waiver request, he said all-street parking spaces, what are they referring to? Where, where are they looking to do that all-street parking?
Well, it, it's all part of inside the, the Technology Park.
Okay.
So as the businesses come in, there'll be a determination of how much parking is required based on a square foot and the use. If they demonstrate that, that they don't need as much parking through a parking study, they'll be able to reduce that parking on-site.
Okay. But that's will be actually in the park itself?
In, in the site itself, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff? Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Actually, is there any chance you can just lay down in front of this all the time, so we don't have to go through this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Again, Rob Merrill for the record with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridgewood, here on behalf of Embry-Riddle. I've got some folks here within the audience, and I'm going to introduce them just so that you know they're here, and you can ask them any questions as I get done with the few comments that I'm going to make to you tonight. Chris Hardesty is here from Embry-Riddle, Duncan Ross behind him from the Prosser-Hallack firm, he's done some planning work for us on this, Colleen Nickelen, oh, sorry, Dan, Dan D'Antonio instead of Colleen, sorry about that, Dan, done our transportation planning for us, and Dwight Durant, a civil engineer, also here with us to answer any questions that you might have about their fields of expertise. Also Chelsea Sims and Debbie LaCroix from Cobb Cole are here, so I'll, I'll try to offer them to the extent that, that you'd prefer to talk to them rather than me. I've got some, a picture that I handed out to you that I think is illustrative of some of the questions that already came up about the, the proposal that's before you to amend the, the PMD, but I, but before I talk about that, I wanted to just mention to you, this is really an update of something that you guys have already seen and approved some time ago. Some things have changed in terms of the plan, I don't think there are any things that you would have any particular comments or concerns about, but I'm happy to, to try to address them with you, really things like configuration of roadways, as Dennis mentioned, some, some provisions in the, in the, in the actual development agreement that clarify the timing of construction and phasing and things of that nature, that when the project was originally approved as the PD, it was, those things were a little more fixed, and we wanted to make them a little more flexible as we've now gone out to the marketplace to, to talk to folks about being in this park. The exhibit that Duncan Ross prepared for you that I think gives you a good feel for what the entrance to the park will be like, is actually a true depiction that's reflected in the landscape plan that's part of the, the PD. And the one thing that I will point out to you that is different, but we will, we are agreeing to make an amendment to the plan to reflect, and Bob, I will apologize, apologize to you in advance, there are four day palms that we've shown in the median to the entrance, I know you're not a palm fan, but these are the nicer variety.
Okay. Well, as long as they're the nicest ones.
Yeah, these are, these are in the thousands of dollars each, so these are the nice ones, and I think they really are, you know, much more majestic and, and the type of thing you want at the entrance to something like this. You'll even see over on the left-hand side, they kind of gave you a picture of how the buildings will be somewhat buffered, but at the same time, we want people to know what's in here. I mean, I don't think I have to tell you all about the, the economic development, the public benefits, bless you, that, that this project brings to you. It's, it's, I think everybody knows that, and I'm not going to spend time talking about it, but I will say, you know, I'm happy to be here tonight with a, with a, with a corporate citizen of this community that, that is not somebody we're hoping is going to do something great. They've already done it, and they're already here, and we're already proud of what they've done. I mean, they're, they're one of the things that we talk about when somebody asks about Daytona Beach, and they're, they're, they're taking steps to, to make that even better, and that's, this is one of them. So I, I hope that, that we'll get ringing endorsements from everybody, and I hope this is a lot easier on you than the, than the previous request. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it for questions for any of the experts who belong today.
Any questions for the applicant?
I, I have a question, really simple. The driveway into the project, is that the driveway they've been working on for the past couple of months?
It is. And, and let me just say, Kathy, that's a great question, I meant to mention something about the construction that's going on there now. The, the grading and driveway work that's being done now is consistent with the, the actual entrance location is consistent with the original approval, that's why it's being done in advance of this, but some of the other inner improvements that, that are not being done now are needing some tweaking, and that's part of the reason why we're here with this. But yes, that's it.
Well, it's nice the way they have it now, because you can just go off and make a, make a U and come right back out again.
Well, the purpose, the purpose was really to have the property have a face that we could show, you know?
Okay. Are there any other questions, the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Was there anybody, is there anybody like to speak in favor of this issue?
Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President of Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber, and Chamber has always supported the development of Embry-Riddle Research Park and all, and so we think it's going to be a fantastic means to provide additional jobs, the jobs, the high-tech paying jobs that we've been looking here for a number of years. I think they, and I keep asking about, was it Diamond Aircraft, you know, I mean, and that's one of the possibilities, you know, of a new company we have coming here, so we see a potential for a lot more, so we've always been in support of this.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Would anybody like to speak against? Board, any discussion?
No, I just, it's, this is a huge piece of the proposal for the economy of Daytona Beach, and it's, I mean, it's unbelievable what this is going to bring to our air, and the people that it's going to bring, and, you know, and the satellite stuff that it's going to bring, it's just...
Well, they've done a superb job out there so far, anything they've, it's really a superb job.
Yeah.
So I'll take a motion.
Okay, I just want to make a comment again. I've seen Embry-Riddle grow from the time I actually moved into the area, and I think this is fabulous for the economy and for the citizens here, and when you talk about aviation, Daytona Beach comes up, so this is certainly a plus for Embry-Riddle.
Anybody else?
I was pleased when they received the contract to make it a technology park, and to see what they anticipate putting there has just amazed me, and I like the sign. I looked at the sign in our package, and I'm going, how in the world are they going to hang it? I just assumed, because the other one is up, that this was going to be up, but I feel better seeing, seeing it where it is.
We approve rezoning, Plan Master Development, Second Amendment, DEV 2013-107.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carried, obviously. Would you be kind enough to read the next one, please?
Certainly, thank you so much. Item number six, Special Use Permit Amendment, West Side Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses, DEV 2014-017, quasi-judicial hearing. Mr. Davis has submitted the form, is that six? Seven?
I told you.
You gave me six.
Eight.
Which is it?
Number eight.
Okay, excuse that. Quasi-judicial hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dennis Merzak Planer with the City of Daytona Beach. Again, this is a request to amend an existing special use permit to allow a church use to expand to an adjacent property permitting overflow parking on the, and associated site plans. Give you the, give you the overall view of where this is located. This is located just north of Dunn Avenue, between White Street and Colfax Drive. Got an aerial for you, I'll get a little closer there in a second, but the church primarily takes up the entire block, with the exception of the, the single-family building that's currently on the, on the site. The land use is currently, or excuse me, the zoning is currently R1A, single-family residential. Here's the close-up for you, you can see the, the church is in the hashed-out area, the single-family property that they're going to be expanding to is shown and outlined in red, so it's in... in red, uh, so it's in that corner of the property. Once that occurs, the church will be occupying that entire block. Uh, I wanted to give you, and this is also available in your, your staff reports, but this is the layout, they're looking to put in sixteen stabilized parking spaces, uh, to provide for overflow parking of the, uh, for the church. Uh, they also have presented a, uh, landscape plan, um, including a decorative fence around the, the south and the, the west of the property. As far as the review criteria, the, uh, the, the proposed application does meet the special use review criteria. Uh, it also must meet, meet the church use review criteria. Uh, some of the things that they, they do meet, uh, that it not be located within six-hundred feet of a similar use, uh, that structures be at least thirty-five feet from the property lines, adequate access to parking adjacent to arterial streets, and a minimum of two acres. Uh, the site is not a minimum of two acres right now, it is, uh, point nine acres. Uh, at the time it was approved, uh, didn't have a requirement for the two acres. Uh, since that time, the two-acre minimum was put in place. Uh, if they are allowed to expand, uh, and taking the extra point-two acres, uh, they still won't be at the, the, the full two acres, but it brings them closer, uh, to that, to that, uh, conformity, so it reduces a non-conformity. Uh, as part of the, uh, staff recommendation, two conditions are being proposed. Uh, the first one is that the use of the additional property be limited to church overflow parking only, and the second one is that any uncorrected violations, and this is a, this is something that's out of our Land Development Code, uh, that would be, uh, appropriate for this, uh, this item. Uh, any uncorrected violations of any provision of the Land Development Code, or any unpaid code enforcement correction or abatement lien, or any unpaid civil penalty or costs arising from a code enforcement action regarding the real property that is subject to this request must be satisfied, and that would, would be a condition of approval. Uh, so as far as staff's recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the accept, expansion of the existing special use permit to allow the church use in the R-one-A zoning district with the conditions previously stated. Uh, the item is scheduled for the May seventh, two thousand fourteen City Commission meeting, and a majority vote of the Planning Board, Planning Board members. Presenting voting is required, uh, to recommend approval to the City Commission, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any recommend, I'm sorry, are there any questions, though?
So, it's already a non-conforming use, but this makes it less...
Less non-conforming, correct.
That's right.
Exactly. That's exactly what it's... Actually, it's not non-conforming, 'cause when it was approved, it was conforming, but the codes have changed, and by adding this, and the codes have changed, it's less than what is needed, but it's more in compliance. More than what it is.
But we have this, it's better than it was.
So, I guess the answer is because they have that first conditional use, it's conforming.
So, it would be looked at a better, a better use than it was previous, a square inch.
Yeah, that didn't seem to be a very scientific discussion there, but I think we'll go ahead with it.
We all understood.
Latcha, are there any questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Is that, um...
Bobby Ball with, uh...
Did you fill out a...
I will, I will. Bobby Ball with Zev Koenig Associates, three hundred Interchange Boulevard, Ormond Beach. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, there are some folks, uh, from the congregation here as well, so if there's any questions you have, I'll, I'll keep it brief. Uh, I think Dennis did a great job of, of working with us and, and getting us to this point, so, uh, I know you've got a long agenda, so I'll be brief. If you've got questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Talking is pretty selfish, man.
Yeah, are there any questions?
No, I just have a comment. I, I pass by there all the time, and that building has been up there, and to see something done and something, uh, much more attractive would be a plus, definitely.
No, I agree. I took a ride around there this afternoon, and I, I said it will not do it any harm by not being there. Okay, are there any other questions of the applicant? Is there anybody in the, anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Yes.
John Nicholson, four thirteen North Granville Avenue. It's been over ten years since I made a comment on church properties and the loss therein to tax dollars. Uh, again, we're gonna lose tax dollars on this property, but if you've been there, it's not really a house, it's an old garage, and I've never, in thirty years, seen those garage